We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation from Reverend Hernandez of St. Vincent Seminary, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Yesterday at Mass we read, Catholics read, from the first letter of St. Paul to Timothy, "First of all, I ask that supplications, prayers, petitions, and thanksgivings be offered for everyone, for kings and for all in authority, that we may lead a quiet and tranquil life." And thus, we pray for our city and for our city leaders today. Blessed are you, O Lord, our God, for you have created all things and called us to honor you and to serve each other. We pray for our Boynton Beach community and for these, our elected leaders. Help them discern wisely what is truly for the good of the people they are elected to serve. Never allow them to fall into fear or discouragement, but permit them to know your will and to do it courageously. Give your love and encouragement especially to the weakest among us and those who most need us to serve them. Protect those who protect us, especially our first responders. We entrust our city council and all of those who work in our municipal government to your care, and we make our prayer in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed are you, just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz. Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Penzerga.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? I know that I'd like to have another announcement for Feeding South Florida's event this Saturday, and we received an email from Vice Mayor Katz. Do you want to have a discussion about that?
Yeah, just, I guess legal might be the most appropriate place to put it, just a brief discussion about the delegate status for commissioners to associations and committees.
Okay, so is that, you will put that under new business?
Sure.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just a question for a city manager or for the city clerk. In regards to our discretionary funds, is today the last day they use it, or does it go away if we don't use it before the end of the fiscal year?
It'll go away September 30th if we haven't.
Okay, then I'd like to walk on an item then and designate my funds to an organization before that ends, that opportunity ends.
All right.
I believe I might have $250 left or something.
I'd like to do the same thing.
All right, so we'll put that under new business as well. Any unused community support funds? We have a motion to approve as amended.
Does that move?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to conducting our second public budget hearing for fiscal year 2019 annual budget, proposed resolution number 19-093, adopt the final millage rate for the general fund for fiscal year 2019-2020. Do we need public comments for this?
Yes, public hearing on it.
Okay, so I believe our millage rate is 7.9. I will open it up to the public. If anybody has any comments regarding that?
We have no changes from our first public hearing, so it's the same status.
All right. Seeing no one come to the podium, may I have a motion to approve on resolution number 19-093?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution number 19-094, adopt the final budget for the general fund and all of the funds for fiscal year 2019-2020. What is the number for the budget and what is the total for the general fund and the total budget? If I can get those numbers.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Frederson, Finance Director. The general fund budget for this year is $96,358,776, and the total budget is $226,018,130.
All right, thank you so much. Does the board have any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comments.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast, 27th Way. I brought this up when we had the initial hearing back in July, and you all assured me there was enough money in reserves, but we now have a very unstable political climate. Gas prices are going to rise massively because of the attacks on Saudi Arabia, and I just want to make sure that we truly do have enough money sitting in reserves and to cover the projected increase in the cost of gasoline for all the city services, because things have changed in the two months since we had these initial hearings, and I spoke about it back then. So I think that's something that, you know, judging by what's happened over the weekend, maybe we should be looking at that and making sure there truly is enough money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to have any comments regarding the budget? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Penzerga. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, that does conclude the annual budget and millage adoption process, which were two public hearings, last meeting and this meeting, and just to re-announce that the millage rate of 7.9 mils is 4.75 percent above the rolled-back rate of 7.5418 mils.
Thank you. Proposed resolution number 19-095, ratification by City Commissioner of the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
So move.
Second.
Let's see.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, informational items by members of the city commission. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
None at this time.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. No disclosures, and none at this time, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
Just one disclosure and then a public service announcement. I did meet with Jim Knight and representatives from certain areas in District 3, and then my public service announcement is to all the parents, grandparents, or anybody who has kids in the room, Walmart is currently offering $30 gift cards for returning your car seats. So as the mother of a six and a three-year-old, I have plenty of car seats in my home, and I'm definitely going to be taking advantage of this, so I just wanted to share that information with everybody as well. If you have car seats that are old, instead of trashing them or getting rid of them, turn them into Walmart, they will supply you with a $30 gift card per car seat, and that's something that you can use to either upgrade their car seat or just whatever you need in the house. So figured I would share that, because I think it's very informational and hopefully can help some parents in the room or who are listening. Thank you, that's all.
Mayor, before we move forward, can you all hear us out there, because it sounds like something's wrong, but can you all hear us?
Yep, we've got to make sure that everyone speaks into the microphone.
Thank you.
All right.
Did you guys hear my public service announcement?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Commissioner Penzerga?
I have no disclosures, thank you.
All right. For myself, on September 6th, I spoke to the seniors of the Community Caring Center at First Presbyterian. I attended a ribbon-cutting in Delray regarding their new trolley system called Freebie. I attended a youth summit over at St. Paul. On the 8th, I attended a rally for ending gun violence. On September 9th, I attended a pitch competition over at 1909 with Commissioner Penzerga. On the 10th, I attended South Tech's groundbreaking over at their new location at the Old Odyssey Middle School. I attended an unveiling of Josh's benches over at J.C. Park. I spoke with the Umbrella Company that helps seniors with daily tasks. I had a meeting with the Veterans of Foreign Wars regarding their upcoming renaming on October 19th. On the 11th, I spoke with Christ Fellowship, I spoke at Christ Fellowship for the Firefighters' Chiefs 9/11 Memorial. On the 12th, I went to the literacy luncheon with our city manager, and I'm very excited for, to read for the record, and hopefully we can claim back the title of reading to the most children this year. I attended a grand opening of Ferris Luxury Salon over in our CRA. On the 13th, I went to Krista McCullough for National Anthem Day and spoke to their student body. And on the 14th, for those that have not seen it, I went to go see Peanut Butter Falcon with our Boynton Beach's own Zach Godaskin, and it was a great movie, it was definitely fulfilling, and I encourage everyone to see it if they have not seen it already. I think you got one more week. And that is all my disclosures. Moving forward to announcement of recent state and national marketing and event awards. The state awards will be announced by Suzanne Neve. Did I pronounce your last name right?
Close, it's Neve.
Neve, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, no apology necessary. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Suzanne Neve, and I am the CEO for the Florida Festivals and Events Association. I have the honor of presenting similar-type presentation in cities throughout the state, and I do have to tell you, I've never seen a view like that one at a city commission meeting, so great start to the meeting. Our association currently has 700 members who collectively produce 3,500 festivals and events throughout the calendar year in the state of Florida. The live events industry has a significant economic impact for cities, driving tourism, retail, and restaurant spending. We're thrilled to see cities such as yours embracing the power of live events and congratulate all of you as a commission for creating a sense of community through special events. FFEA celebrates the accomplishments of our members annually through a program called the Sensational Awards. For over two decades, we have recognized the many talents of our members and distributed more than 2,000 awards to deserving event industry organizations and individuals. Event organizers work hard all year producing incredible events and programs that celebrate our communities and bring together neighbors. At our annual conference this past August, we had the pleasure of announcing several awards for the city of Boynton Beach in front of 400 industry leaders, and I'm thrilled to be here this evening to recognize those events and individuals who make them happen. The city received seven Sensational Awards from FFEA. Your Civic Center demolition event received three awards. First place in the category of PR media campaign, second place in the category of multi-agency collaborative program, and second place in the category of promotional item for your bricks. The #HooverIsHappyBrightline campaign received third place in the category of PR and media campaign, and your 2018 Fourth of July event received two third-place awards for promotional item and for photography. However, perhaps the most prestigious award to be received by FFEA each year is the Most Innovative Award. This year, the city of Boynton Beach received this exclusive award for its town square six events in six days. Voted on by its peers, this annual award is given to only one member in the state of Florida for its creative approach and execution, and I'm proud to award the city of Boynton Beach this award this year. With over 500 entries received, these awards are a true accomplishment to celebrate. Congratulations to the entire team who's worked so hard to make the city of Boynton Beach a success and a statewide award winner.
Thank you very much, and...
I have a question.
Yes.
Who's controlling the PowerPoint? Can you go back about two or three slides? Stop. Ah, yeah, that's my kid right there. Yay. By the way, correction on that slide that said six events in six months, it was six events in six days, so it was six months? But I just remember there was a bunch of events happening, and it was, it felt like six events in six months, six days, so I'm just saying. But great job to everybody.
Mayor, may I just say something quickly?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Eleanor doesn't do this accolade stuff very well, because that's, it's just not in her nature, but this award, the special designation of that one award with the events, we typically can apply as our CRA does in different categories. This is something I just want the commission to understand that was voted on and thought about and evaluated by all our peers in this industry in the entire state of Florida, and we won number one, which is really remarkable. And I just want Eleanor to, as much as it makes her uncomfortable, to just accept the accolades and say thank you, because we really do appreciate her.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Eleanor Grusell, Public Communications and Marketing Director. In addition to the awards that we received from FFEA, last week we were notified that we received three national awards from the City-County Communications and Marketing Association. This is an organization of over 1,000 members from the United States and Canada. Of the 704 entries submitted in 40 categories and judged, the city received three awards. The Savvy Awards recognize outstanding local government achievements in communication, public-sector marketing, and city governmental relationships with a heavy emphasis placed on creativity and innovation. Rising from third place, then we got second place, finally this year, fifth year, we got first place for our calendar, and I'm very excited about it. And I do want to share with you some of the comments that the judges provided in the after-action. They love the idea of the community superheroes, the super job featuring superheroes in the community. The calendar was not only a tool to engage and educate the community, but demonstrate the city's real care about its community members. The creative visual design execution was on spot, so that had to do with all of your personal drawings inside front cover. Yeah, I'm very proud of that, now I can retire, see y'all later.
No, she can't.
Our second award, we received a Savvy Award, was also in first place, and it was for Hoover Is Happy Social Media Campaign, under the category of Most Creative with the Least Dollar Spent. The judges' comments included, "The campaign highlights clever, creative, and resourceful use of four-legged friends to deliver an important safety message. Excellent campaign, kudos to seeing and seizing this wonderful opp-portunity." This campaign was a great way to tie in the community to changes that were being made in the community, and what a clever way to bring levity and message to a serious issue. Partnering with local business to celebrate an achievement is a great show of collaboration. This entry competed with members in the population up to 150,000, so first place there. Thank you, Suzanne. And the calendar wasn't based on population, so there was no population category for that, it was just first in the nation. In the category of special event, a one-time event, the city received an award of excellence, which is third place, for Civic Center demolition, competing with populations over 76,000. Judges' comments included, "Love the play on food for the event and how it tied together, loves the tiny details like the bricks, very clever ideas for the project, and a way to include the employees and partners." The city receives national, state, and local press conference coverage and recognition through these associations, and these will be posted on the city's website as well. And I wanted to just, I know that questions have been asked as to why do you enter these awards, and I think in attaining these awards, we're not only meeting our strategic goals of developing downtown, because many of them aren't downtown, building wealth in the community, but Boynton Beach branding as well. These awards confirm that the city of Boynton Beach is an innovative and a unique municipality and one that seeks creative collaboration and community partners when planning, promoting, and producing its marketing initiatives and events. We strongly believe it's also a valuable recruitment mechanism. We posted an open events manager position, and within nine days, we had over 60 applications. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Nope? Perfect.
Commissioner Rom?
I have a question, or not a question, more of a comment.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yeah, yeah, you can't get rid of me. Eleanor, you know, every time I pass by City Hall, I always have to make sure I pass by her office to just kind of see her, because she always has a smiling face ready for you. Her personality, I think...
You're going to make me cry, I'm going to sit down.
Ah, okay, I'll try not to get too serious with you, but her personality, I think, exudes, you know, just who she is and the asset that we have in her in this city, and that's just testament to what we're celebrating tonight. I just, you know, want to tell her, one, she's not allowed to retire, because, I mean, you're hot right now, you know, you can't retire now, you're too hot. And second of all, you know, I want to just congratulate you and really just thank you for what you're doing and the positive image and the positive feedback that we keep getting back about the city, and of course, a large portion of that is due to your efforts and your work, so I'm thankful to you for that. And just to give a little backstory on Hoover, because Hoover is in my district, so for anybody who doesn't know why that award is significant, Hoover is a cute little hound dog, and when we had Brightline and all those trains that were coming through every couple of hours, you know, honking their horns and really just making a ruckus through our communities, Hoover would howl every single time, all hours of the day. And so we promised our residents that we would get Boynton Beach to be designated as a quiet zone, and, you know, everybody was just waiting for the day that that would finally come into effect, and when it finally did, this was the result of Hoover being happy. So there is a cute story behind that as well, and I think it was just so important to share that. So, you know, again, Eleanor, thank you, and I know it's not a work that you do by yourself, so thank you to Laura, I believe, as well, and just everyone else who makes this possible, and thank you to the FFEA for, you know, recognizing her great efforts, because I'm glad we're not the only ones who knows that she's great, so thank you.
Can I go to the room?
All right. Our next announcement is...
Hello, hello, this is the hand.
Yeah, Commissioner McCray.
Gee, you got to look down, you're not sitting in the middle. Eleanor, I'm not going to beat it up tonight, I just want to tell you, thank you, and what Commissioner Romulus said, it goes for all of us, I'm just saying, you know, you're one of the gems here in Boynton. I'm sorry that, you know, Commissioner Romulus has to pass by your office and make you come out, but you come out when I'm just sitting there like that, so I don't have to walk. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more hands, moving on to an announcement by Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager, about the city's Baby Safety Expo.
(Music) Community money, Census 2020, don't forget to count your kids. Hi, I'm Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager for the city. With the Census 2020 coming up, one of the hard-to-count populations as deemed by the U.S. Census Bureau is children under the age of five. So with September being Baby Safety Month, the city, we decided to host a Baby Safety Expo for the community. The city's Baby Safety Expo is taking place on Monday, September 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Schoolhouse Children's Museum, 129 East Ocean Avenue. This free, family-friendly expo includes water safety tips, basic first-aid information, car seat installations and safety checks, infant safe sleep guidelines, and the opportunity for parents to create kid-print ID cards. Participants in the expo include Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies of Palm Beach County, Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, Inspire Chiropractic, and the Boynton Beach Police Department, Boynton Beach Fire Rescue, Recreation and Parks Department, and the Boynton Beach City Library, all of whom will be providing these important safety tips. The expo will also feature fun games, including giant Legos, chalk art, and more. As I touched upon, this event was created to serve three purposes. Number one, to market the 2020 Census to the hard-to-count population of children under the age of five, as well as to provide a community service to our residents by informing them about safety-related issues. A third bonus is hosting the expo at the Schoolhouse Children's Museum is offering us the opportunity to remind the community that the Schoolhouse Museum is open during the town square construction. Postcards promoting the event, as you see on the screen, were distributed to local preschools, Bethesda Hospital Maternity Ward, as well as city facilities, including the Schoolhouse Museum, City Library, et cetera. We also utilize social media to target local moms groups to market the event. We hope everyone can stop by for valuable safety information and family-friendly fun. More information about the expo is available on the city's website, boynton-beach.org.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none?
I do have a question. So that song is meant to be stuck in your head now, right?
Exactly. I hope you think about it as you wake up in the morning tomorrow and next Monday, September 23rd, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Laura.
Sure.
All right. Next, we have proclamation for September as Deaf Awareness Month, and the city of Boynton Beach, Beth Wagameister, Deaf Advocate, to accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas 93% of deaf children are born into hearing families, only 7% are born into deaf families. Whereas American Sign Language is the third-most widely-used language in the United States, whereas deaf people do not feel that they are disabled in any way, where in fact, we must recognize that deaf people can do anything except hear. Whereas 466 million people worldwide have a disabling hearing loss, and 48 million Americans have a significant hearing loss, of these, almost 6 million are profoundly deaf. Whereas to learn more about the types of educational programs and support services that are available to deaf and hard-of-hearing children, whereas we believe Boynton Beach's deaf, deaf-blind, hard-of-hearing, and late-deafened individuals should have the same access to many benefits and opportunities available to live, work, play, and communicate in Boynton Beach. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of September as Deaf Awareness Month, and encourage all residents of the community to support this worthy endeavor.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners, for taking the time to recognize Deaf Awareness Month. Before it continued, I'd just like to ask if anyone in the room here tonight, of a city employee, if they would raise their hand if they've had a sign class over the last four years at all. That's amazing. You know, some cities talk about being compliant, and some cities, you see commercials or things on YouTube where a city will learn sign for a person for a day, but the city of Boynton Beach is so committed to improving access for everybody all the time, just not for a day. I wanted to thank you for that. Over the last four years, since I've been working with Debbie Majors, who is just absolutely amazing, I'd like to be able to recognize her for her hard work in the city. Of becoming an ADA-friendly city, we have had at least 139 different employees throughout the entire city that has either had a training, a workshop, or sign class, or participated in some way to become deaf-aware. So we appreciate that, and I just want to applaud the city for that, so thank you. I want to thank you for allowing me to do the work that I can do in the city, and everything you all are doing, from captioning to providing interpreters for videos at the EOC, at health fairs, at community night events, to ensure that everyone feels welcome, safe, and equal in the city of Boynton Beach. I look forward to working even closer with the city. As you're a pioneer on ADA, you have my deepest respect. There are currently an estimated 60 families in the city of Boynton Beach that are deaf. Now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce June McMahon, a resident of Boynton Beach, an active member in the deaf community. She'd like to express her thanks.
I'm really proud to live here in Boynton Beach. I've lived here for 17 years now, and I've seen the city just grow tremendously, thanks to some people here, especially Debbie Majors. She's the tops. And Debbie sent me an announcement, and I send everything out to the deaf community whenever there's an event that, who live in Boynton Beach. She always provides an interpreter for meetings and events, and I really, really appreciate that. Recently, there was hurricane training that we attended, she invited the deaf community... Recently, there was hurricane training that we attended, she invited the deaf community to come for that hurricane preparation. And also, like you said, I appreciate that you're all are learning sign language, it means a lot to all of us. I'm a former teacher of the deaf, and I've been in, in American School for the Deaf, for the first school for the deaf, um, set there, and then I moved here, and I've worked as a teacher here in Palm Beach County. I'm retired now, but I'm so glad that there are services that are continuing. Another county in the state of Florida, look at Boynton Beach, and they're really ahead of many, many cities all over, and all over the state of Florida. People always ask me, and I say, yep, I'm very proud to live in Boynton Beach. So, thank you very much.
Laura, did you need a census update was different than which, the video? Okay. Then yes, let's have the census update, I didn't know that that was-
They're somewhat related, so I understand.
Because you played the video.
Hi again, Laura Landsberg, marketing manager with the city. Right now, I'm here to provide you with an update on the city's work that we have been doing over the last quarter to promote the census, which, as you know, is coming up April 1st, 2020. Tomorrow, we're starting, we're hosting our first Complete Count Committee meeting, and that's, we invited 200-plus community leaders to attend. We reached out to HOAs, religious leaders, preschools, nonprofits, people who are really involved in the community, and asked them to come to our meeting, where we're going to educate them on how they can help, uh, let their members and their, their sub-community know about the census. We also, um, have the, created the Baby Safety Expo, which I discussed, and we are also doing a Facebook Live on October 1st, where we are going to have the community ask us questions and answer any questions, October 1st marks six months out from the census. In the last several months, we've also created a lot of marketing materials, which we're using for our outreach. This is an example of the postcard that, right now, we've, have at all city facilities. We have community standards bringing with them when they're out and about in the community. As you see, one side has the, um, everyone counts and the important message about the census in, in three different languages, driving everyone to our website, which, boynton-beach.org/census, which is translatable into three different languages, as well as ADA-friendly. So driving people to our website, which answers, which has FAQs about the census, is really important. The other side focuses on the "don't forget to count your kids" message. This is the second postcard, which you all saw the front for the Baby Safety Expo, on the back, we included the same "don't forget to count your kids" message. These postcards were distributed, as I mentioned before, at preschools, um, community, community facilities, as well as Bethesda. This is an example of, um, an item we are having at the Baby Expo next week. These are, we had baby-on-board decals designed for the first 100 attendees, so we figure the attendees can help us market the census when they put these on their cars, which it includes a census logo and the messaging, "don't forget to count your kids." This is a census poster, which we're reaching out to local businesses to see if they will post at their businesses from now through April 1st, as well as our city, um, facilities. The library has, um, their home screen, this is a screenshot, they were able to create a folder with census information, and then we have some flyers that, um, library patrons can click on to learn more. In addition, we partnered with the library to create bookmarks, which were handed out at the back-to-school expos and back-to-school meet-the-teacher events in the last month. We have some here as well. In Fun Fair, we put a full-page ad in, again, directing people to, um, the website, 12,000 were distributed. We intend to put Fun Fair ads in for the next quarter as well. In addition, the back panel of the Water Quality Report, which is an annual publication, and with a 40,000-count distribution, includes the logo. The envelopes that are being sent out of City Hall have the census logo on the front as well, so far, 20,000 have been distributed to date. Before I talk about the next steps, I'm just going to also, uh, let you know that we also, in the last quarter, created a list of businesses and residents in one of the areas designated as hard-to-count in the city. And we're, we're going to be heavily targeting those locations in the next quarter with postcards, posters, as well as door hangers closer to the census. We also, over the last several months, attended several local events, such as, um, women, business owners, there was a meeting with, at the district in Boynton. We also, again, went to back-to-school events, we included census messaging on the back of our hurricane flyers. We were at the mall and several other hurricane expos, as well as HR had a career fair that they included, and we were at that, um, event at the Senior Center where, with the deaf community. We coupled up with hurricane messaging, as well as the census messaging. Moving forward for the next couple months, as I mentioned, our Complete Count Committee meeting is tomorrow night. We will heavily focus on reaching out to local businesses and residents, as well as our Facebook Live. We will have a booth at the Senior Center Open House, as well as, um, one at the Haitian and Friends Unite Against Breast Cancer event in early October, here at Intercoastal Park. We are working with our GIS team on a presentation that they're putting out at local schools in November, it's GIS Day, and she's going to incorporate census messaging in her presentation. We also have I-95 billboards, as well as future print projects, which will include Fun Fair, as well as the 2020 calendar. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Out of the 20, 200 invites that you sent off, your meeting tomorrow night, what was the response?
Good question.
Figured it was.
We, we, so far, have about, um, five RSVPs, but we anticipate with our follow-up email blast going out tomorrow, more will be attending.
You only have five?
Who, who are they? One of them is an, um, one of the representatives from a local HOA, one of them is a principal at South, um, South Prep Academy, as well as, um, Michael Wilson, who is, um, the moderator of Boynton Raw, and I have to check my list to see the others, but I can let you know that first thing in the morning.
Really, I, I don't need to know, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, out of 200, what, why, you know, the response was only five, was that something we probably missed, or was it exciting enough, or what did it go out?
Well, it's a good question, and we're still hopeful that a lot more will attend who didn't yet RSVP, and we think the reminder email might help as well. But, um, our census rep who we're working with, he, um, received a copy of the invitation as well, and he said it was a great invitation, and he's hopeful as well that more will attend who actually RSVPed.
And, and aren't those individuals our representatives of very large groups of people? So, as long as we can get to one key person, then, like Mike Wilson, he's going to help blast that out all through Boynton Raw, which has, I don't know how many members, so that's the key there, too.
Yes, and we've also been reaching out one-on-one, we met with Marie Seid from, um, the Haitian Breast Cancer Organization, she, we met with her, um, in person, and she's, um, she's talking about the census in her radio addresses as well. So we are also reaching out on an individual basis, as well as hosting the Complete Count Committee meeting. And again, this is our first one, we're hopeful that the attendees will be greater than have RSVP'd so far, but this is going to be the first of, hopefully, a couple, and, um, we also think reaching out one-on-one in individual meetings will help as well.
Right, you know, I, I understood what, uh, the city manager said, but that's not the point that I'm concerned with. My point is that although they reach a large number of individuals, my concern still is, you know, it seemed like a very low number, and I'm going to say it again, you know, and I, I'm one of those hop-on-what-Boynton, you know, always do, I'm just saying, you know, that when we start sending out stuff, I don't know if it's not eye-catching or whatever, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it seemed like there's no enthusiasm, and you know, and, and this is the way the city of Boynton gets paid, I'm just saying, you know, by the census, and I'm just saying, you know, if there's anything that the commissioner can help you all do, or something, they get this information out, I'm just saying, we need to kind of partner up and up to any, I'm just saying, because we're going to be losing dollars if everybody is not counting.
Absolutely, and thank you for the effort, we definitely would appreciate any assistance by the commission.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes, um, just wanted to ask, do we have numbers of what our percentage of compliance or response was for the last census? Do we know how many, what, what our percentage was?
Um, I, I will ask one of our mem-, oh, Hannah?
Well, I don't have the, the, but I, I-
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know how successful we were last census, like, if it was like 70% response rate, or whatever, and I'd like to also have a numerical goal for what our response rate is for this year, that way we can shoot for that, or know what number of the, the population we need to be targeting in order to get that achieved.
Okay, I will get with Hannah, and we can get you that information.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Um, so, none of the RSVPs were from any of the members of the Coalition or clergy? To your knowledge?
Not, not to my knowledge.
So, I, I know the city manager meets with them on a quarterly basis, I think, is there an email list or anything? Because I know that, you know, there's-
Yes.
-a shortage of, of leaders from the clergy when, when there's an issue that concerns them in these chambers, and they seem like the perfect conduit, because they have, you know, congregations packed full of people, so I think it'd be important that it, at least a representative from the Coalition try to attend, so that they can disseminate the information to ensure that the members of their congregation are counted.
Right, absolutely, they were on-
They're all on the email master distribution blast that we do, so, all of them that were provided by the Coalition, I think there might be 30 to 36 ministers are on that list, so they receive the initial one, and we'll get the one tomorrow, so-
Yes.
And we would welcome the city manager giving a personal call, it'd be great.
I'll text him.
Thank you.
I do want to, um, give Laura a little accolades with this, because she's done this totally 100% by herself, and our U.S. Census rep that comes in to meet with her, probably on a monthly basis, pulled me aside and said, you know what, you're neck-and-neck with Del Rey, but you're ahead, you're ahead, keep it up. So, I think we're, we're working those hard-to-count populations, and I do want to give her some kudos for spending that amount of time.
You know, I, I'm going to go ahead and, and say, uh, back up what Vice Mayor said, and that is, you know, and, you know, I'm not picking on the Coalition, but they always come here, they want to get something personal done, or raise hell, I'm going to be honest with you, and it's kind of bothers me when something's beneficial. This is a time that we need them here, I'm just saying, you know, don't wait till something happens and come and say, why you all are not doing this, I'm just saying, we need them now, and they should be up to end and partnering with us and saying, you know, how can we help? They always told me, they said, when you get back in office, somebody'll be here every night at one of these meetings and stuff, and I can almost count the times when I, I saw the Coalition here, and, you know, and I feel real bad, I'm just saying, whatever we could do, I, I'm just saying, you know, we need to do it, we need to call them in on the carpet, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Our last announcement is about this Saturday, September 21st, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. There'll be a mobile distribution of fresh, fresh produce and perishable items provided by Feeding South Florida in partnership with the city of Boynton Beach. I encourage all of our commission to share that information, uh, through their channels. And, moving on-
I don't know if I missed that, but was there an email with that flyer sent out to the commission?
We'll send it to you tomorrow, I certainly can, yeah, because they're, they're looking for volunteers as well, or, it's about 8:00 to 11:00 to help unload the food and set up the green market.
Okay.
If you got a bad back, please stay home, I'm going to tell you, it's a lot of hard work, I'd do it, oh, God.
All right. Seeing no more announcements, moving on to public audience, individual speakers.
We got a presentation.
A library? Oh, yes.
He's ready to go.
Greg, you ready? You're so quiet, you know, I wonder why.
I'm ready.
All right. As usual, they don't make noise in the library, too.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, I'm really excited to, uh, be here this evening to share with you some innovative technology that's coming to our new library, and also some other services. Our mission is, is the Boynton Beach City Library enriches lives by inspiring learning and nurturing creativity. I would be remiss without following the fire chief's, um, lead on this, that the library had number-two satisfaction with city services in the resident survey and the business survey. We have a new computer system that is going to be launched next week, next Monday, September 23rd, it's called Koha. Um, it's going to replace the current computer system that we have. When you go into our system and search for, uh, an author, a title, a, a book, a DVD, it's going to look a little different. This new system is referred to as an open-source system, so we have more control over improvements to the system, as opposed to the big box that we currently have now. So, what we're doing is, we're, we're also going to save money by, um, over a couple years of $7,000. This is a better system, and we're saving money, so I'm excited to share that with you. Also launching on September 23rd, we are going, we're going to lend mobile hotspots to patrons, it's unlimited access through Sprint. Uh, we're going to have 14 units available to customers for checkout for free, for a 21-day lending period. This was also partially funded by an innovation grant through the Library Services and Technology Act. If any one of you would like to check this out tonight, right now, and take it home and try it out, I brought two of them with me, so let me know.
You said you got them for free?
No, no, no. What's free is access to the, for the patrons.
Oh, now.
No, we're paying, um, I think about $4,000 a year. It's a pilot program, we want to try it out for a year and see how it goes. It's very popular in other area libraries and libraries nationwide. Uh, we launched our local history and archive page, it's, uh, please take a look at it, there's some pamphlets up here for the public and for commission. It's really cool, we've launched our, um, our oral histories online, so, Ms. Sawyer, I don't know if you listen to your grandmother's oral history, it was recorded in 1978 on a cassette tape, and we've been holding them for 40 years, and now they're available to the public on our website to listen to. I listened to a couple of them, they're very interesting, they talk about, um, growing up in Boynton Beach and what it was like back in the 20s and 30s, very interesting. And we're going to keep, keep, um, we'd like to do more oral histories in the future with people who live here now, so we're going to be working on that in the future as well.
Hold it, you, you, stop. You just made me think of something highly important, this is, we buried a, a doctor, um, Oshalana in, uh, Broward County, and she went to Africa and everything, and, and at her funeral, we played what she was saying, her interview, and, and it wasn't a dry eye in the place, and I'm just saying, you all are on to something, keep going, okay?
Yeah, it's really cool, I, I encourage you to go to our website and listen to these, they're, they're fascinating. Um, also, um, we have finding aids that list all of our 81 collections that we have in our storage, so, and, it tells you what we have in every box. So go in there and take a look and see what we have in our archive, and people can access it much better now that they know exactly what we have.
What do you have, that archive stored at, now, because it was stored in the-
Right now, they're on the second floor of the temporary site. Uh, we also have some old historical photos as well posted on there, a couple hundred, so take a look at them.
Right. I love what you've done here with this digital archive, and, um, you gave me this idea, and I wanted to ask you if there were some plans in the works, but do you have enough material for a possible exhibit?
We, we do, uh, and we will be doing exhibits in our new building, unfortunately, we don't have the space in their temporary site, but we do, uh, we will be doing some exhibits in the new building, for sure.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Um, latest from the library, our growing digital library collections, uh, there's two new pamphlets, one for adults, one for teens and children. Um, our newest is Canopy, you can go on and download free movies and watch them at home. Uh, also, the Sepulon One card, uh, it's an arrangement with 28 local libraries, both public and academic libraries, this has been ongoing for a few years, but more libraries have been added. So, if you have a Boynton Beach City Library card, you can go to FAU, get a library card there, and access their collections for free. I'd like to give you a preview of our cutting-edge technology that's planned for the new building with your approval. There's a big dollar item on, on the agenda tonight. We're going to be, uh, purchasing three RFID self-checkout systems, one for the first-floor kids and teen area, and two for the second floor. It's patron-driven, you, uh, this particular system, I'm going to show you a short video to show you how it works. I'm gonna show you a short video to show you how it works. The system does multiple things. You can pay fines with cash, credit card, debit card. It will give you book recommendations based on what you're checking out at the time. You can download eBooks instantly from that terminal. It promotes library programs, and it has an ADA accessible option that, it's a switch that will rise it up and down for someone in a wheelchair. So they're really innovative and cool systems.
Before you move from that, this will not get rid of employees, will it?
No, 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 no. By purchasing this and the automated materials handling, handling system, it's gonna take mundane tasks away from the staff, so I, I think by adding these, we're going to be able to open on Fridays.
Yay!
So, we're, we're gonna restore Friday service with the assistance of
Yay!
With the assistance of these new technologies.
You provided a lot of preamble for that.
You gotta warm us up there.
Roll it out.
So, I'm gonna play a short video that shows you how they work. This one's hard to hear, so.
We really value our relationships with our customers. Here at Biblioteca, we understand that each and every one of the products and solutions we develop impact the lives of librarians on a daily basis. Our goal was to deliver the most ergonomic, user-friendly kiosk designed specifically to maximize the day-to-day activities of a library while helping to promote the activities and programs available to the community. We focused on things that were important to our customers, such as a large portrait screen. From here, transactions are easily viewable, and more real estate is available to promote library programs and services. With the goal of making transactions clean and simple, the Self-Check One Thousand incorporates every form of payment possible, therefore eliminating the need for extra hardware sitting on the floor or mounted off to the side of the kiosk. To ensure the process was easy for patrons to follow, we included LED lighting that led the users visually through transaction points, step by step. This was in addition to animated instructions on the screen to increase that first-time success rate. We understand things can go wrong with kiosks occasionally, but our objective was to ensure that issues are spotted and resolved quickly. By adding custom color warnings for routine maintenance, such as low receipt paper or offline status, library staff can easily see that the kiosk needs attention from the other side of the library. For libraries who prefer to accept return to the kiosk, we incorporated return bins that fit perfectly underneath the shelf, therefore maximizing library space. All of the options were crafted to blend seamlessly into the whole user experience. We also designed it to be easily customized. Things such as DVD case unlocking, adjustable height, a larger glass shelf, and matching desktop design were all factored into our specifications. Last but not least, we made sure to offer the Self-Check One Thousand in almost any color imaginable. Libraries can match their interiors and have fun with their self-service areas. Three years after we started this journey, we are excited to improve the overall user experience by integrating QuickConnect self-service software with the Self-Check One Thousand. Benefits of patron promotions and recommended reads are completely new to a large portion of our customer base. This brings the best of both Biblioteca and 3M Library Systems' knowledge and experience into one well-crafted solution that enables libraries to exceed the needs of their communities.
Okay, that's a demonstration of the RFID self-checks. Also with that come RFID Premium Security Gates. And the best and most exciting part is I wrote a grant that's gonna pay for all this.
Yay!
To the tune of eighty-four thousand dollars.
Another yay!
Another technology I like to bring forth is an automated materials handling system. It'll be located outside the library entrance, outside, convenient to the parking garage. It automatically checks in library materials. A patron can walk up to it, scan their card. It opens a window, and you can put multiple items on, and it takes it in and sorts them and checks them in automatically. Somebody forgets to put a DVD back in the case, it'll recognize it and kick it into a trouble bin. So, I'd like to give you a short demonstration on what that looks like.
The time it takes between checking items in and getting them back on the shelves should be fast and efficient. To accomplish this, Flex AMH accurately categorizes items according to your specific needs. Powerful enough to handle returns from multiple locations, both staff and library users can conveniently process items twenty-four-seven. Libraries can configure Flex AMH however they choose, effectively building their own custom solution at a cost-effective price point. For large libraries, transportation systems can span many rooms, floors, and even buildings. This sorts items in the quickest amount of time with the least amount of effort. Using a book drop, multiple items can be returned, separated, and processed individually, saving the time of both users and staff. We offer adjustable bins that keep materials at the most convenient height for library staff. Furthermore, we offer a stacking cart where every item is organized and neatly stacked, making re-shelving quick and easy. Interacting with QuickConnect AMH software, users receive an engaging and intuitive self-service experience. Flex AMH offers limitless configurations and works effectively with barcode, EM, and RFID technologies. We simplify the materials' handling process, so you can evolve your service and deliver the best overall library experience for your community.
And, the final technology that I'd like to bring to the, to the, the new library is, I'll have to bring this to you for approval probably around December, their laptop anytime kiosks. What I'd like to do is put an eighteen, eighteen-slot kiosk on the second floor for adults, and an eighteen-slot one for teens. Anyone who checks these out, we're thinking about maybe a three-hour timeframe, they, they'll actually be able to take them out of the library into City Hall or outside in the park to use at their convenience, or into a quiet study room, or anywhere in the library.
Make your locals go wow with self-service automated checkout kiosks from laptops anytime. Designed around major laptop and tablet models from Apple, Dell, HP, Lenovo, and Google, yes, iPads and iPad minis are both options. Choose from space-saving six- and twelve-bay host starter stations with card swipe or barcode readers. Add on twelve- and eighteen-bay companion stations to reach thirty devices in only five linear feet. Mix laptops and tablets in the same system. Branding brings kiosks alive. There's much more. Stations are integrated to your integrated library system and/or a local LDAP or active directory. Additionally, web camera, email notification, and a full suite of inventory management, audit trail, and management reporting functionality make the system one of a kind.
Another great thing about these is I also have grant money to pay for those.
Okay, why you got grant money? What is, Emery Garcia, people walking off with laptops?
It actually takes a photo of you when you check it out.
Oh, God. Be careful.
Which can easily be passed off to the police department if someone chooses not to return it. Also coming in the new library is Makerspace, Maker Activities. We're going to have a creative studio. These are options under consideration. We're going to have to hire our new staff member to design the program, but we're thinking about sewing classes, art design, 3D printing, laser cutting, audio and video production, steam activities, virtual reality. There's a lot of educational programs that you can wear the virtual reality glasses and learn, like inside the human body, or going to a, a person that's unable to travel, they can go across the world and see what it's like. It's very cool technology, and it's not that expensive. So, really looking forward to bringing that. And also a heritage studio. If, if people have old photos, videos, and audio, and they wanna digitize them, we can help them do that as well. We have a renewed commitment to customer service. We're, we're going from a, we're transitioning from a passive to a proactive, proactive customer relations model. As you saw in the old library, you walked in, you saw four people sitting there. You're not gonna see that anymore. You're gonna see maybe one person sitting behind the desk, and you're gonna see a person greeting customers to see what their needs are. You're gonna have a person training customers on how to use the self-check, and you're gonna see staff roving around the library to help customers with their needs directly. Because of the self-checks and the automated materials handling system, that's six hundred thousand items that they don't have to touch, so they're gonna have that time to, to dedicate themselves to direct customer service. This will allow us to restore our Friday hours from nine to
There's that preamble.
No additional budget requests.
Yay!
No. But the good thing
How long has it been? I wanna ask a question. How long has it been since we've not had Friday hours?
Too long.
Ten or eleven years.
Yeah. This is, this is significant, people. I just wanna say, like, I'm excited about this.
Yeah.
Everybody's kinda like, meh, whatever.
And the automated materials handling system, it's a big-ticket item, but in the past, in the past year, we have not been fully staffed, and the money that we didn't spend on salaries will totally pay for that. So, it's a good thing. So that's all I have. I hope you're excited as I am for the future of the library, and thank you for your time and support. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
Commissioner Penzerga, would you like to begin?
Just a brief question for you, Craig. Are you in touch with the South Florida Science Center? They run a space where they do all sorts of activities, science-based activities for kids.
We have not been. We've been short-staffed in our youth services department, but we just hired a new librarian, so we have very limited activity space in the current temporary site, but in the future, I'll make, we'll make sure to
Connect you guys.
contact. Sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes. This is more of a, an idea, something I'd like to look into in the near future. I saw that the Palm Beach County Library System just rewrote their policy to do away with library fines. I don't know if you're aware of that, but that's something I'd like for us to explore and bring back.
It's funny you mention that, because the library advisory board is discussing that at its meeting next Wednesday, and we've been talking about it for quite some time. And we have Miami-Dade County just cut all their fines to the tune of over a million dollars, but the idea is to, you know, it takes away barriers for, for people who can't afford to pay fines. We still have our collection agency, which is a very friendly collection agency, that does send letters and makes phone calls to people who do not return items, and it's working well. Our success rate is about sixty percent. So, we've been using that since two thousand and eleven, and probably sent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of non-return over the, over that time period. So, if you do take away the fines, there is an option to continue to try to get those items back.
Exactly, and so that's what I'd like for us to look into, and as you said, it's coming before the advisory board, so I look forward to that coming before us at some near fut, at the near fu, in the near future, and hopefully that's something we can put into process here. Thank you.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Can we still drop off our books from the Palm Beach County Library at?
Yes, you can.
Any other libraries, can we drop them off there?
Yes, and we'll send them back to them for you.
Thank you, all right.
You're welcome.
Great presentation, and it wasn't too long. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the pictures.
You're welcome.
And the videos. Very exciting. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Give it to the old people, I don't want one.
Sure. I got my library card.
I don't have my library card.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take one just to try it out. Yeah, thanks.
Moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Arlene Houston. I live in Delray, thirteen-twenty-seven A High Point Way Southeast, and I want to thank you so much for having us here. I'm with the National Organization for Women, the Palm Beach Chapter, and I want to introduce Michelle Demone, one of our newest board members.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Demone, and I am here to present to Christina Romulus, excuse me, Commissioner, the National Organization of Women's Award for the Alice Paula, Alice Paula Award, excuse me. Unfortunately, a few weeks ago, you had some obligations that were just as equally important, but we wanted to come here and give you this award. The Palm Beach County Chapter now would like to recognize Christina Romulus' service to public office as a commissioner for the city of Boynton Beach since two thousand and sixteen. As an example of a modern-day woman, Commissioner Romulus took her oath of office during her last trimester of her pregnancy. Commissioner Romulus has served our community as an adjunct instructor at Palm Beach State College, teaching anatomy and physiology, and is a licensed practical nurse. Commissioner Romulus, along with her husband Darren, established Sky Administrations, a small business marketing consulting firm. An active humanitarian, Commissioner Romulus has done missionary work in Haiti for earthquake and hurricane relief efforts, as well as the Dominican Republic. She has also volunteered as a nurse for the Muscular District Association. Commissioner Romulus has lived in Boynton Beach since two thousand and ten, and while in office, she is committed to improving the quality of life for all, increasing public safety, and beautifying the downtown area, and remains active among the community while raising two young sons with her husband. We feel Commissioner Romulus is the example of a feminist who promotes and protects women's rights through her leadership in her social, political, and economic life, and we would like to present you with this award.
Yay!
Thanks, Michelle. The National Organization for Women, not of women. If you have happy and healthy and well-tended women, you have happy kids, you have happy husbands, you have good families. Now, which started in nineteen sixty-five, has half a million members, and in Florida, Palm Beach County has about two thousand members at, including at large. And we're very vibrant and we're very bold, hopefully not aggressive, and we serve as much as we can. We have key mission statements, and I'll leave some brochures here for you to, to take. And please do, and also look up our website, and you'll see all the things that we're involved in. And what I would like to do is invite you on October nineteenth, on a Saturday morning, from eleven to twelve-thirty, at the Delray Public Library, we will have another program. Our programs are meant for awareness, for education, and for takeaways, to, to act on some issue that's very relevant, so some important thing going on now. On October nineteenth, we're gonna be, we have a speaker, Sarah Peoria. She was in London. She's Brazilian, and she has researched amazing studies on feminism, intersectionality, and she will speak to what women pay, the pay gap on women in our country, and also the entrepreneurial situation. And it's gonna be very informative and wonderful. Our events are free and open to the public, so I hope everyone will come. I also want to speak about something else. Last Sunday, I met Mayor Grant at the Council Across America to End Gun Violence, and we, we are promoting a petition to ban assault weapons now. Do you all know about that petition?
You don't, just speak to us.
Excuse me?
Just speak to us.
Okay. When our legislature doesn't act, there is a way that citizens can, and that's through an initiative, the Citizen Initiative. It's what gave us Amendment Four in the last election. It gave us medical marijuana. It gave us a solar choice. But what that consists of is that we need seven hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred petitions signed by current validated Florida voters. And the, the citizen, the Amendment Four last year got almost sixty-five percent of the vote. So what we're trying to do now is get this referendum on the two thousand and twenty ballot, so that it'll become an amendment to the Florida Constitution that bans assault weapons, military-style weapons that do not belong in the hands of civilians. This past spring, the legislature has made it very difficult for any of our initiatives to happen. to happen in this process. And also, our Attorney General came out with a statement to claim that the language is confusing. Right now, it's at the Florida Supreme Court, we're waiting approval, but we're really pushing for the grassroots petition effort to get this referendum on the ballot. So what I have brought are 10 petitions with some instructions how to reach me and get, or ways to submit them. And if you think you know 10 people that are Florida voters that can sign this, this is totally bipartisan. It's a human issue. It's a safety, public safety issue, to get these military-style weapons off the streets. So I will stay here, and at the end, if you wish to take 10, fully appreciate it, because now we don't have some of the mechanisms we had earlier. I hope that was clear. Are there any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, I hope that I'll see you at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Kantor, K-A-N-T-E-R, 2905 South Green Leaf Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426, directly across the lake from City Hall. And it's one of the things I'd like to say tonight. I noticed I came specifically because on the proposed R-19097, acceptance of Quantum, and I went through all of the things. I'm happy. All my people in my HOA are happy. Everybody I know is happy. And we're just so pleased with this progress that I had to come down and say hello to everybody and ask just one more thing. Sometime over the years, we had a little bit of a problem with five streetlights. Somehow, we managed to get the HOA to pay for these five streetlights on Boynton Beach Boulevard. I'm sorry, on Quantum Boulevard. I'm not sure how that happened. I sent all of the materials about two weeks ago to Colin and Mac, and they said they would work on it. I assume that it was all done. I just wanted to make sure that you put those five streetlights back with the rest of the streetlights in the park and take them off our bill. I appreciate it very much. And also, again, as I said last time I was here, I have a lot of information, go back a long time. Anytime you want anything, like a personal walk through the park or whatever, let me know. I'm here to help you. Thanks.
My name is Gary L. Fishman. I live at 3504 Diane Drive in Boynton Beach. This is a time-sensitive matter, and that's why I'm coming back. I come before you again to state to you that the five-acre parcel to the north of Lake Idah Park is a menacing, maintained, unmaintained. It should be maintained. It's an unmaintained jungle. I do not mean to occupy your time again with this most important time-sensitive matter, but this land should not belong to Delray Beach. But this land should not belong to Delray Beach, there's no question, and also should not be allowed by Palm Beach County to be annexed by Delray Beach. Lak Calra has the only land access to this parcel and the only one with the means to maintain this lot. Boynton Beach had bid on this land four to five years ago and was the lowest bidder, but was awarded, and also was awarded the land. They backed out of the purchase because the county refused to change the restriction of five years of gaining access, or they'd lose the land. Delray Beach not being a legal participant in the auction violates the law and decides they want the land without the five-year access clause. Illegally, Palm Beach County changes the language and eliminates the clause. Highly suspicious.
Mayor?
Boynton Beach should be highly concerned with what the county did. Why is Delray Beach getting this special treatment? Now, Delray Beach is violating the laws of the land once again through their recent bid to annex the land. The process is going on now. I, we, and our neighborhood do not want this land annexed to Delray Beach and do not want Delray Beach to own this land anymore. By violating these laws, agreements with the county, Delray Beach should give up the land. Change the annexing should not happen. It's a clear violation. Lak Calra had won the auction with his bid desires to put in approved luxury homes that Boynton Beach had approved and is being stopped by Delray Beach. Mr. Calra's plan is in jeopardy because of what Delray Beach and the county is doing. Please help our neighborhood. Please. Please help Mr. Calra. Please. Thank you for listening and allowing me to speak.
All right. Yeah, I know. I understand that we have the item on our agenda later on in the session. So any other discussions regarding that plot of land, we need to wait till the item that's under legal.
It's on tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So Lak, we're going to discuss this later on in the evening?
My name is Lak Calra. I have not taken permission to give you the slide initially, so I'm giving you the picture of this. Please look into it.
Andrew. Now Lak, we're going to discuss this item later on, so we'll give you an opportunity to speak at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Calra.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I wanted to say Happy Constitution Day to everyone. The Constitution was written in the Pennsylvania State House, where the Declaration of Independence was signed and where George Washington received his commission as commander of the Army. It is now called Independence Hall. Written in 1787 on September 17th, it was signed, but it was not until 1788, a year later, that it was ratified by the necessary nine states. The U.S. Constitution was prepared in secret behind locked doors that were guarded by centuries. Some frammer delegates in the state ratifying conventions were very troubled that the original Constitution lacked a description of individual rights. In 1791, a list of rights were added. The First Ten Amendments became known as the Bill of Rights. Of the 55 delegates attending the Constitutional Convention, 39 signed and three delegates dissented. Two of America's founding fathers did not sign. Established on November 26, 1789, the first national Thanksgiving Day was created. The U.S. Constitution is the oldest and shortest of all the written constitutions. Ben Franklin was aged 81, and the oldest delegate, Jonathan Dayton, aged 26, was the youngest delegate. The original Constitution is on display at the National Archives in Washington, D.C. when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. It was moved to Fort Knox for safekeeping. More than 11,000 amendments have been introduced in Congress. 33 have gone to the states to be ratified, and 27 have received and the necessary approval from the states to actually become amendments to the Constitution. And this information is courtesy of the DAR, who have gone through and gone to the state of Florida and celebrating Constitution Day and teaching about it is now mandatory in the state of schools, in the schools in the state of Florida as of this year, as well as spending a day just talking about the Declaration of Independence signing and a week focusing on the founding fathers. So all this is new to the state of Florida, the increased focus, and thank you to the DAR for doing that, so we do not forget our history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Lewis. I'm here from 1054 Gateway Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. What I came here to talk to you guys about is the turkey drive that we got going on this year. Mayor, you were part of the turkey drive last year that I did.
Or, excuse me, what is a turkey drive? I can't hear you.
Turkey drive.
Yep.
Yes, we have an annual turkey drive that the Hatt Foundation does, so I'm here on the behalf of the Hatt Foundation. Last year, we did 2,500 turkeys. This year, we're hoping to do 10,000 turkeys. And we do need all the mayors and the commissioners to come out to support the city to be able to do something like that. It did get televised attention. But the statistics that we have is 64,000 children do not have enough to eat. We have 210,000 residents in Palm Beach, Florida, who are saying that they do not know where their next meal is coming. And one out of every seven senior citizens are saying that they do not know as well where their next meal will come from, or they need some type of assistance. I need help just be able to feed at least 10,000 families, which is like 40,000, 40,000 people, is what I'm trying to aim for. And this statistics was done by the United Way of Palm Beach County. I brought in the flyers today. I've been going all around Palm Beach County, Boynton Beach, dressed as a turkey. So I wear this huge turkey suit. I'm so serious with you guys. I'm wearing this huge turkey suits, and I'm trying to ask for donations to make sure that we can feed those people. The reason I'm so passionate about it is because I myself was once homeless, and I myself once was needed hungry. I'm also raised by a single mother, so this is something that is something I'm very passionate about. But I need you guys' help. This is why I'm here today, to ask for any type of assistance that you can, to be able to help me, be able to provide for these 10,000 families, or more, in Boynton Beach. It will take place in that location that I just gave you, here. And I brought a flyer here for each and every single one of you to be able to see if you could just pass it around. And if I could please meet with the commissioners and the mayor, maybe one-on-one, to be able to discuss exactly what I have going on here.
And your contact information's on the flyer?
My contact information's on the flyer. Also, I will be sending an email out to each and every single one of you right after I leave here today.
All right. And it looks like Eleanor got a copy of your flyer, and we'll be posting it out as well through the city's social media.
Thank you for coming out last year, as well, Mayor.
It's my pleasure.
And I hope to see the rest of the commissioners there as well, too. The city would really love it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right.
Are you a 501(c)(3)? Are you just doing this on your own voluntarily, or what?
Yes, I am a registered 501(c)(3).
What's the name of your registration?
Hatt Foundation.
What is it?
Hatt Foundation. The EIN number should be there as well for you to be able to look it up.
You'll email it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, moving on to administrative. We have no applicants. The positions that we have available are on the boards of the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Education Youth Advisory Board, the Historic Resources Preservation Board, the Library Board, the Senior Advisory Board, and I believe, next commission meeting, we'll have someone, the Arts Commission. They'll be an open seat as well. Moving on to consent agenda. Would someone like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Would someone like to pull an item out? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Just, I don't want to actually pull it. I just want to, again, get clarification for Item B. When we're spending over $1 million, I don't like to just pass it under consent. If we could just get a quick clarification from staff, what this is for, I'll be happy to vote for it after.
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. As last previous meeting, we discussed, this is the item I brought back before you, modifying our award. One of our vendors, Duval Landscaping, has decided to, and we parted ways with them. So we're reallocating their sites back to the group, as well as asking for an additional $100,000 to use for additional services on an as-needed basis throughout the year for next fiscal year. This is being done in anticipation of next year's fiscal budget. So we're looking for this allocation for next fiscal year. This maintains all of our medians, our park sites, our vacant lots, and right-of-ways.
Andrew, since you're up there talking about medians, I want to talk about Northwest 17th. What are you doing on that?
Right now, it's going to be a bigger project. We're looking at replacing some of the curbing on that island. We're still working with the engineering department to decide on how we're going to do that.
Be so kind to give Mr. Sonny Garcia a call, please, in regards to this, so he can leave me alone. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Andrew, regarding Gulf Stream Boulevard, between Seacrest and Federal, I know that's the dividing line between the city of Boynton Beach and Delray. Who owns those medians?
They're split between the city, and I believe the actual dividing line is on the south side of the median, so that median is wholly owned by the city.
So we-
We maintain the medians, but the south half of that right-of-way is property of Delray, resplit.
Okay. And so if that road needs to be redone, do we need to partner with them?
Yes, we do. And we've been in contact with them. We've been trying to, we're looking for design to redo that whole street. So we have been partnering with them. We are in discussions on what those fixes will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew, I have one other question. What was the reason for this increase?
There was, some of it is, the sites, like I mentioned, the Duval were being reallocated. So they were not the low bidder. Well, Duval was the low bidder, so now that we're allocating within the same vendors-
Have we replaced the shrubberies and stuff with this?
Say that again.
Have we replaced the shrubbery?
Yeah, so the additional $100,000 on as-needed, Matt Doyle, our new landscape architect, is asked to be able to replace more of the landscaping that's missing in the islands or in parks. So that's what that additional money is for. The additional increase per line item were due to, again, Duval was the lowest bidder, so now we're having to use the second lowest bidder, so there was a small increase there. As well, there were some islands that were left out in the original bid that are being reallocated as part of this. So those were some of the increases.
Well, my take, while I'm sitting up here, I'd like to know what islands you all are working on and what islands are being replaced with shrubbery and stuff, so at least I could at least see some of the money, because, and District 2, people are telling me about the medians on our federal highway. They look like, you know, hell, and I'm going to agree with them. They do, they need a lot of attention.
Yep. This year, we did Seacrest from C-16 Canal to Boynton Beach Boulevard. There were some shrubbery and trees that were damaged, vehicle accidents. That was actually done this fiscal year. So I know that Matt has on his plate is to come up with a plan to identify how he's going to do each island and to give us an overall budget. It's going to take several years to replace all the plants, materials-
Okay, with vehicle accidents, the insurance don't cover any of that?
When we can get the insurance information and get them, we do try to go after them, yes.
I need to hear that. All right.
Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda item? Seeing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. New city manager's report. Moving on to new business. Proposed Resolution Number 19-1, oh, I missed the public hearing. Sorry. Trying to jump ahead. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-029. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing the abandonment of a portion of the unimproved Northeast Third Street right-of-way, north of Northeast Ninth Avenue, in connection with the dedication of property from the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, and realignment and extension of Northeast Third Street from Northeast Ninth Avenue to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, subject to staff comments authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Penzerga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yep.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Bodas 50.
Proposed Resolution Number 19-0100, accepting the dedication of property from the Community Redevelopment Agency and realignment and extension of Northeast Third Street from Northeast Ninth Avenue to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 8B.
Excuse me, misassignment here tonight? Just wanted to see you. Sit down. I'm good.
You got him excited. Approve MLK overlay and use matrix revisions, Part 1, amending the land development regulations. Approve MLK overlay and use matrix revisions, Part 1, amending the land development regulations. Jim, do you mind reading all the ordinances?
Sure. Ordinance 19030, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 1, General Administration, Article 2, Definitions, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. Ordinance 19031, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 2, Land Development Process, Article 2, Planning and Zoning Division Services, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. Ordinance 19032, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 3, Zoning, Article 3, Zoning Districts, Article 4, Use Regulations, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. Ordinance 19033, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 4, Site Development Standards, Article 5, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Good evening, Amanda Basile, Principal Planner. Um, in front of you, you have a um a set of amendments that covers four different topic areas. Um, the first one we grouped together as um LDR cleanups. This includes um a few uh changes to um first, the site plan and master plan process and requirements. Um, it also includes an increased minimum density to the TOD, um, and then some corrections from the previous versions of the LDRs that you've seen. The second and biggest part of this amendment has to do with the MLK overlay update, um, coming from the CRA redevelopment plan. The third part is an update of our use matrix. This is Part 1 of a couple, at least. Um, we are bringing just today the residential and lodging portion after this. You will see the commercial um and industrial sections follow. And the last is an update to definitions, um, the definitions that correlate to the previous sections. So again, this came, the biggest part of this amendment does come from the CRA redevelopment plan, um, specifically um the heart of Boynton District. And as you guys have seen this before, um, within that CRA plan, there is an implementation guide for staff, uh, which outlines some of the tasks in front of us. Updating these overlays is one of the tasks, um, and that is why we are bringing it forward So the first thing I would like to go over is the overlay boundaries for the MLK district. Um, this one is not as straightforward as some of our other ones. Uh, the red does include the overall boundary. However, the ones that are um by right or automatically included are in gray. So that includes everything that is um touching MLK for frontage and/or currently has commercial zoning designation. The other portions, red, are only to be included if they are within the same project boundary as one of the gray parcels. So part of this amendment was revising the MLK overlay to be consistent with the other overlays that we've seen previously. Um, so this covers these nine different categories. And we're going to go over a few of them. Um, the first one would be that what makes an overlay different than a zoning district is that this is a defined area. It is not um anything that's across any type of zoning district. So these regulations are specific to an area. The second is conflict. If there are conflicts between the overlay regulations and other zoning districts, the overlay does prevail. So modified building and site regulations, this is the mediest part of the regulations. This really is what changes the underlying zoning district. Um, and we're going to go over two of the bigger ones, which is the pedestrian zone and the scale and height. So this are the, um, what you see in front of you is a diagram of the pedestrian zone requirement for MLK. Um, it is composed of three portions. First is the street trees, second is the sidewalk, and the third is the active area. This is the same type of diagram we've seen in our, in our other overlays, um, but the numbers are slightly smaller to correlate to the smaller right-of-way of MLK. The pedestrian zones are used for a few different things. In commercial districts, we hope to see them be used for outdoor dining and/or merchandise In pedestrian zones, it could be used as front yards and porches and um front doors that face onto public sidewalks. So the second biggest thing that this is changing is scale and height. Um, please excuse the error, that is not supposed to read Ocean Avenue, it's supposed to read MLK Boulevard, um, but the numbers are correct. So the maximum height on MLK is 35 feet, and that does have to be consistent for 30 feet deep. But the overall zoning district height, um, I'm sorry, the overall height is still um within the zoning district. So all the MLK is doing is actually capping a portion of the height that's fronting MLK. Uh, this is just a really quick tutorial if um the public and/or the commission hasn't used our use matrix. Um, we're, since we're going to be seeing this quite often in the next few meetings, um, this is how you can see if your uses and where your uses are permitted. Um, it is a very simple matrix. You would go down by what your zoning district is and across by what use you would like to do. If you see a P, it is permitted. And any of the numbers um after those letters would be additional regulations that you have to go through. I'm available for any questions if there are any.
What are the parking requirements? Is, is there any changes for those?
Okay, for, you mean for the MLK specifically?
Because I believe there is specific MLK restrictions or allowances.
So the way the code is written currently, it gives a blanket 50% reduction. Um, that was done initially only for commercial developments. What we did in this revision is clarify that. So we wrote in that the 50, the 50% reduction on MLK is specific to the commercial component of mixed-use developments, but not applicable to the residential component.
Okay, and so because we have that uh study component as well, so that the developer can come in with a new study component if it's a um multifamily development coming in?
So it would depend what's most beneficial to the project itself. Um, the way our relief sections are written um for parking is you can do one of the relief types. So if another type of relief gets you um suits your needs more, you would use a different type. You don't have to use the MLK relief. If you're doing multifamily and you see a better justification or better numbers for your project under the shared parking, then you are permitted to do that instead of the MLK.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, going down the list, may have a motion to approve ordinance number 19-030. So move.
Second.
All that, uh, may have a roll call, please.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yep.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pincirga?
Yes.
Mayor, we have a, vote is 5-0.
Ordinance number 19-031, may have a motion.
So move. Second.
May have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pincirga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance number 19-032, may have a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
May have a roll call, please.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pincirga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance number 19-033, so move.
Second.
Uh, may have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pincirga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right, moving on to item 8c, proposed ordinance number 19-034, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 2, Land Development Process, Article 2, Planning and Zoning Division Services, Section 2F, Site Plan, including time extension and modifications that begin implementing staff recommendations from the internal review of the city's development review process, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Okay, um, good evening, Amanda Basile still. Um, this code amendment is part of a larger project that the department is going through. Um, right now, we are doing something called a development process review, and it's an effort to start streamlining um all of these different areas of the department, including policy and procedures, um, transparency, branding, and an education and training component. Um, so you will see several more of these amendments come before you as well. Um, this specific amendment has to do with bullet point number one, policies and procedures. Specifically, this go past to do with site plans, um, and the five different categories that we have of site plans. The first is exemptions. So this covers any type of project that does not have to go through this process. Um, the second two are new site plans, uh, between minor and major new site plans. Major site plans covers anything that requires city commission approval, um, and recommendation of the PND Board. And minor site plans uh can be approved um through staff. It will be an administrative approval. And then the last set are modifications with the same two subsets, major, which would be approved by city commission, and minor, which would be administrative approval. So exemptions um cover things like single families, um, internal modifications, pools or amenity changes, um, minor structural additions, any uh new structures that are non-residential that are less than 1,000 square feet, and garages and accessory structures for residential buildings. So these types of projects do not go through the site plan process. So the next set, the new site plans, um, there are again the same two categories, minor and major. Major would include dwell, a residential um project that included more than 10 units. Um, for commercial, it would be, commercial or non-residential, it would be anything over 15,000 square feet. And then the other three are qualifiers. So if it needs any type of conditional use or needs any type of relief, if there's any other application that requires the city's, the city commission's approval, that would automatically bring that project before you. And minor would be um whatever's left, so the smaller residential and smaller commercial projects. So for an example, at your upper right, we have Taco Bell, although that was a small square footage, it did require a conditional use, so you would have still seen that project. The project um below that, which is a small commercial building, um, that project would have been able to be approved through the administrative process. Something large-scale, which is obviously more than 10 units, like 500 Ocean, would go through the standard process that we're familiar with already, um, coming to city commission for approval. So the last set, which is the site plan modifications, um, these are the different qualifiers that which would dictate which approval process it would go through. Um, for major, it would be an increase in 20% of square footage. If it is a certified green building, we did raise that to 25%. And then again, if it needs relief, if there's any type of adverse effect on neighboring property, um, and/or if it doesn't resemble the approved plan, all of those would kick it up to the major process. And minor site plan modifications is everything that's left. I am here to answer questions if you have any.
Amanda?
Yes.
You mentioned adverse effects. Could you elaborate what exactly that means?
Sure. Um, adverse effects would be a qualifier that the, that the director, um, of planning and/or development would be able to use if a project um is influencing or um doing something to its neighbors that the code doesn't anticipate. Um, it would give staff the ability to bring it to city commission. So remember, these are just site plans. So these are projects that already have both lane use and zoning in place, so they're asking to do something that is essentially by rights already.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Amanda, by doing this, will this make the building department more friendly for people picking up permits, et cetera, instead of, you know, all this long time of waiting and people are being disgruntled and we're hearing bad news about you all?
Yeah, so this specific portion that we're changing has to do with the planning process, so it's actually right before they get to permitting, but it will shorten um the time that it takes for them to start getting their permits. But again, this is just the first um set of amendments that you're getting with this whole streamlining process. I know the building department is part of our meetings where we're going through, um, going through ways to make that entire process more efficient. This specifically is just the planning portion, though.
Let me ask another question, another way, other cities are doing this?
Yes, actually, other cities already have some of these, these thresholds in place.
Why are we so far behind, then?
I don't know, but I'm here to make it better.
Leave it alone, I'll leave it alone.
All right. And so this means that any sort of minor site plan or new construction will not be in front of the board?
Uh, if they meet those qualifiers, yes.
Okay.
It would, and if, again, they have the lane use and zoning and don't need relief, then they would go through an administrative approval.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
Second.
May have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Pincirga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, proposed resolution number 19-101, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency to provide financial support to the Wells Landing LLC in association with their application for the 9% tax credit for low-income housing tax credits and sign any related application documents confirm such support.
So move.
Second. Discussion.
Yes.
First of all, I'm going to go ahead and say this before he gets too far gone, okay? I know it says Wells Landing, but we have not put no name to this project. Clarification.
We don't, we don't get to put a name on the project.
I understand, but it says Wells Landing, and I don't want it to go out, just like you said, that we always send out the wrong information, when people get the wrong idea this project, I'm just saying, we have not said that this name of this project will be called Wells Landing. I need that stated in the record.
I don't think we can state that.
You can state it.
When, when the applicant submitted their proposal, that was the name that they intended to name it, which is what they named their LLC, but it was subsequently expressed that that was not necessarily the name that the commission-
Okay.
-supported or would support.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. So we had a motion and second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to your item, Vice Mayor, regarding the delegation question?
Yeah, I just, um, I want to take, to get a clarification or an understanding from my fellow commissioners that my interpretation of when we are appointed to various committees or associations as representatives of this commission is that that, you know, becomes our responsibility, um, and I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, that if you're appointed to be the representative, the delegate from the commission, that, you know, other elected officials should not take it upon themselves to engage in city-related business with those bodies unless that's been discussed uh at one of these meetings. I'm not trying to, to make any sort of big deal about it, but it was brought to my attention and it created some confusion, uh, and I would just prefer if everyone kind of stayed in their lane and respected each other's position as the representatives for their respective uh committees or associations as kind of the gist of where I wanted to put it. I'm not trying to, like I said, create a situation, but-
Okay.
-I would appreciate that respect and I will show that respect.
All right, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm going to agree with you, that's why when we had appointees, we said that this person be the one that will speak to that group and they will represent the city. Anytime anybody go out and say that they're speaking for the city, it needs to be voted upon by the group and say that we give you lead where you can go and represent the city. Uh, whatever the problem was, I don't care and I don't need to know about it, but I'm just saying you are the lead person to speak to whatever group that was, that was appointed by this city, and if they had a problem, I wanted to talk to them, they should have came to you. I'm just saying, you know, it was done wrong and I'm in favor of what you just said, we need to stay in our lane. I like that, I like driving in my lane anyway, thank you.
All right. Um, so I'm on the League of Cities and the Transportation Planning Agency, and I would encourage any of the, the commission to speak to those agencies. any of the commission to speak to those agencies. You being a commissioner, I, you know, I'm on the board of those, but you have the ability to speak to those agencies at any time and anything you feel relevant regarding the League of Cities or the transportation planning. And regarding Cobra, I, I thought I mentioned that I was doing it as the mayor, not as the city of Boynton Beaches. So not a confusion, I won't be attending any more of their breakfasts, so I'll let you deal with that. And do you mind if I ask, what do you do as the delegate for them?
I attend the meetings and speak to their respective leadership, whether it's issues that they have, that they want to bring to the commission, which are not very frequent because most of their geography is outside of the city limits, or if we as a commission have something that we want to convey to Cobra, that would be my responsibility, is my understanding as the delegate.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
Let me say this, since you said that, you know, you speak, were speaking as a mayor, but there are some things as a mayor that you're supposed to say and not supposed to say. I'm just saying, you cannot go and say that you're representing us, sir. I'm just saying, if, you know, there are some things you probably need to get with the attorney on to make sure that you're following in line. I'm just saying, you know, I don't mind people talking about it, I don't want people saying that I'm speaking for the entire group that's sitting up here and I'm representing the city of Boynton because I'm the mayor. That doesn't give you lead where to go and just start saying things just because you are the mayor, you are governed by rules and policies, just like the rest of us that sits up here, whether we attend or go anywhere else, sir. There are some things we can say and cannot say.
Absolutely. I will not find the commission without their approval. And is there any other discussion on this item?
Uh-uh.
Moving on to unused community support funds. Commissioner Romulus, do you know how much you have left over?
I, I don't, but I'm guessing it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 or 500, I'm not sure, but I'll just expend the rest of it to, what is it called? Connect to Greatness.
I'm sorry?
Connect to Greatness?
Explain to me, what do Connect to Greatness do?
So I, I sat down with, I believe it's Cassandra, I forget her last name.
Addius.
Addius. So we were discussing a campaign that she wants to roll out in regards to helping reframe the conversation around young black men and how they're perceived in the eyes of the public. So I, I wanted to support her in that endeavor, and especially raising to young black men myself, that's something that's important to me. So I wanted to go ahead and designate the rest of my funds to that organization. I believe we already have them on file, so that should be.
They're in our Fund Forum, Fund Fair magazine.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve the amount that she only has left.
Thank you.
All right. And I guess that was, do we have a second, or you were the second, Mac?
He's seconded it.
Vice Mayor, I'm seconded.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do you still have some funds left over?
I think I got the whole thing. Were you able to confirm that right now? Okay. I'm pretty sure I have the whole thing, so. So I'll give one, I don't think the gentleman's here anymore, but I appreciate what he, what he spoke to earlier with regards to the turkey drive, so I intend to give $500 to the Hat Foundation. I'll get his information within the next 24 hours, just so we can process that. And then the remainder of my support funds, so up to $1,500, whatever's left, I'd like to give to the Boynton Rugby Club. I've, I've given to them in the past, they presented in here. It's a local nonprofit youth rugby association founded by a resident of Boynton Beach. They have boys and girls clubs. They don't charge children any money to play, they don't pay anybody anything, it's all volunteers. So 100% of the money that they collect in donations goes right into the club and equipment and paying for referees and field space and stuff like that, so it's a, it's an awesome opportunity. And rugby in, in the inner city in particular has proven to be a great vehicle for, for people to get into college on scholarships and, and have opportunities, so I just, I appreciate the program. So 500 to the Hat Foundation, and the remainder of my support funds to Boynton Rugby. And I've given to them in the past, so we should have that information on file.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. And yeah, no, I've heard South Tech has their own rugby team, and so that's the only sport that they do have, and I know Andrew, he knows a lot about rugby, so.
And if I have any money left over, I want to let it stay there because I don't believe in spending it all. Thank you. I said, if.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Fortunately, Commissioner.
Don't worry.
Hello, spent all of yours.
I'm aware.
You're sorry.
Don't worry. Waiting for the next budget.
Don't worry, October 1st is right around the corner.
What a bummer.
Makes you feel any better, former Commissioner Casello also gave $1,000 of your money to the Boynton Rugby Club.
Of your money.
So moving on to the ordinance number 19-035. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Code of Ordinances of, of the city of Boynton Beach, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Establishing Regulations Regarding the Posting of Underage Drinking Signs Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, and an Effective Date.
Second.
Yes. Vice Mayor?
So I, my personal preference here and gauge the interest of the board is to convert this into some sort of resolution. I've got a number of concerns. Obviously, I support people adhering to the legal drinking age of 21, buying, consuming, whatever, but this ordinance and legal could weigh in. It's an ordinance, so it's a law. Businesses have to follow it, but I didn't read what happens if they don't follow it in the ordinance. Are there any specified consequences, or is this just an unenforceable ordinance?
It is an enforceable ordinance. The provisions for penalty are set forth in Section 3 on the page four of 5. It provides for, it's the same as any other municipal ordinance violation, the potential for imprisonment in the county jail for up to 60 days, or a fine of up to $500, or both. So what would occur in the event of a violation of it is the individual would receive a notice to appear issued by the police department, or a notice of violation by the code enforcement department, and we would proceed for, with enforcement under those two vehicles.
So my concern, again, while supporting the issue at hand, is that everyone knows what the drinking age is. Everyone knows you're not supposed to sell or transfer, or for someone under 21 to consume. My concern is for the businesses, which I think in most cases typically, especially whether it's liquor stores and things like that, they have signs, we're, we're going to create a law that could fine or imprison, and legal could win on this, this is basically any establishment, it's not just liquor stores, it's any restaurant business that serves alcohol. Is that included in the definition of business?
That's correct.
So we're going to require hundreds of businesses in the city of Boynton Beach to put up a sign, which is specified in the ordinance, is eight and a half by 11, so a full sheet of printer paper, basically, with size 30 font, which is also specified in the ordinance. And if they don't do that, and we have our community standards, our code enforcement people spending time enforcing this, you could be fined, it'll be on public record that you violated the city law, you could be thrown in jail. I think a resolution supporting the idea, a resolution that says that the, the individuals who brought this before us, the organization that brought this before us, has our blessing to voluntarily solicit support for this signage on a case-by-case basis. I just, I have a difficult time stacking an ordinance on existing law that is, is very well-known and threatening fining or imprisoning restaurant owners, brewery owners. I, it just, I think standing with the issue is better than creating a redundant law that could lead to punitive measures. That's kind of where I'm at. So I support a resolution akin to what's being presented, I just don't support punishing people for not putting government-mandated signage on top of state government-mandated signage, which already exists.
Vice Mayor, you could accomplish the same purpose without having to convert it to a resolution, and also move this ordinance forward by making an amendment to delete Section 3, which is the, the penal aspect of the ordinance itself. It still leaves the reporting requirement that is set forth in Section 4, but it leaves enforcement to law enforcement department, the police department, simply under state statute, if you remove Section 3. It still, I think, accomplishes the purpose of getting the posting that the people came to speak to us about, but also allows you to move the ordinance forward.
If, if that's a, an expedient way to achieve the desired objective without punishing business owners for, you know, for a law that well-intentioned but kind of redundant, then that's something I'd be in favor of.
Commissioner Romulus?
Just need clarification from the city attorney, because if I'm reading this correctly, the third subsection says the penalties associated with the sale or dispensing of alcohol beverages to persons under 21 years of age include imprisonment in county jail for a period of up to 60 days, a fine of $500, or both. So it's not specifically saying that it's going to the business owner, saying the penalty for sale or dispensing of alcohol. So is it really that we're penalizing the business owners for not posting up the sign, or is it that we're penalizing people who engage in the practice of selling alcohol to underage people who come into their stores? Or just anybody who would happen to sell? Because that, that's the understanding that I'm getting from reading the language that's stated here. It doesn't seem like we're penalizing them for not putting up a sign.
I mean, the, yeah, the question is, is that the, the Section 3 penalty, is that the Florida statute penalty, or is that our code compliance penalty?
That's the violation for violating a city ordinance, those are the penalties. They're generic.
That's.
Another section of our Code of Ordinances that deal with municipal ordinance violations.
Okay, because that's not in this ordinance.
So the penal, so clarify for me.
Once adopted, any ordinance that's violated, the terms and conditions of it can be cited under another provision of our code as an ordinance violation. So that's the penalty for that. It's a cross-reference to that section of our code.
Forcing.
I think that's.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Let, let me ask just to the city attorney, don't we have a law by the state of Florida already said about underage drinking?
We do.
Okay, then why are we doing something like this?
I think this is a response to the members of the community that came forward to request upping the level of communication through the signage that posted to business.
But my take is that the law is already out there, and I'm just saying, why have us put up more signs? You know, I'm about like Vice Mayor now, this seems to be redundant to me. I'm just saying, why keep posting stuff? I'm just saying, the businesses themselves know that if you're underage, you have no business drinking, I'm just saying, they have no business selling it to you, and this, this seems like a redundant thing that we're doing. I'm just saying, like, would you make it more work? I, I'm, I just can't vote for just putting up a sign, just to satisfy a group that came before us. I can't do it.
Commissioner Penserga, do you have any comments regarding this?
Not right now.
Okay.
And I will eventually.
Commissioner Romulus?
As, as the maker of the motion, I'm more than happy to amend it based on what the city attorney is saying, where if Section 3 is stating that we would have to enforce it with all this, being that our, you know, police department is already stretched as it is, I, I don't necessarily think that we need to go trying to fine businesses for not posting up signs. So I'm more than happy to remove that section, but maintain the ordinance, because I do still think that it would be helpful to, you know, for those who are willing to do it, to put those signs up, and at least make it clear and obvious to individuals who maybe don't know or unaware, or don't, frankly, don't care, that this is something that is Florida law.
I'm in favor of this amendment. We don't want to penalize businesses, but certainly we want to encourage people to A, be more cognizant, and B, have a means to report, and I think having that phone number is really important. And putting up a sign for a business on something that, yes, they should already be doing, or people should already know, I think this is one of those, you know, that's saying CYA, you know, this is them doing the right thing, and if I were a business, I would want to do it, to make sure I cover myself. And so with the amendment proposed by my colleague, I would be in favor.
Would you like to second it?
I, I will second that.
All right. Is there any discussion, further discussion from the board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Vote is 4-1.
It will return for second reading with that amendment shown in the body of the ordinance. Ordinance 19036, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending qualifying dates set forth in Article 3, Section 40 of the city's charter to amend the dates for qualifying for the March 17.
MSB.
Nope. MSB?
It's okay. We'll, we'll do with, we'll let you finish it.
Yeah, just finish.
It happens to me quite a bit.
All right. For qualifying for the March 17, 2020 city election, only pursuant to Section 103605 and 166.021 Florida statutes, providing for conflict severability and providing an effective date.
Second.
Okay, can we get a discussion of the dates? When the, when is the deadline?
The qualifying period would be from noon on November 26, 2019, to noon on December 10, 2019.
Okay. And so they have to have it end by noon, December 10, 2019, all their requirements and everything certified by the supervisory election of the candidate petitions?
Correct.
Okay. And the, the fee as well, if they want to be on the ballot?
Correct.
Do you know that that fee is off the top of your head?
It is 1% of the salary.
And then 25 dollars.
As well as a $25 filing fee for the city.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner McCray?
Yeah, the people that's already turned their names in, they have been made aware of this date?
They've just.
Are they going to be made aware? I know it's just coming down, but they will be made aware of this date?
They will be made aware.
Okay. I want no surprises.
All right. Go ahead, and we had a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Who seconded? Nobody's seconded.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. Item 12B, city commission is requested to review the lien modification order issued by the special magistrate at the August 21, 2019 hearing for case 11-2277.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's David Schmidt. I am representing the property owner, Tang Services, Inc. We're requesting consideration of further reduction of the lien. As I explained to the magistrate at the hearing, this property was purchased in May of 2005 for $215,000, and my client became aware of the lien when he entered into a contract which he has pending to sell the property for $167,000. So he's taking a significant loss on the sale, and when you factor in closing costs, he's probably going to net a little over $150,000, and then coming off of that would be the amount of the lien. This is one unit that he owned, didn't get the landlord permit, and the fine is been reduced to $14,000, which is a significant amount of money as a fine for one landlord permit. So we'd ask you to consider to reduce the fine further in order to mitigate his losses on, on the sale of the unit. And I provided the magistrate with a copy of the sale contract at the hearing.
All right. Commissioner McCray, you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from staff.
All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. Adam Temple, Community Standards Director. Yes, sir.
Tell me how do we, I, I understand what we're saying on paper, how we got here. Explain it to us, because, you know, whether he sold it or not, somebody should have done a title search, you know, explain it to me. Layman turn, break it down, so maybe Mr. Smith, you know, can understand as well.
Sure. To make a long story short.
Thank you.
This began back in 2011. It recently became in the compliance by them getting their landlord permit in July. It's been made aware to us that they found the violation through a title search, so as they were going through the, the purchase and sale of the property, they found the current lien, so they quickly, as soon as they found out, they did quickly come into compliance. However, I, I believe we are, we are still owed the administrative cost for, for the case that are still, still pending.
What was the amount of the administrative cost?
$634.12.
And so, you know, our business tax receipts cost roughly around $50 a year, plus their certificate of occupancy, which is like another $50 a year. And this was for eight years that they didn't get it?
Correct.
And so my feeling is, is that we're, you know, we should be made whole for the missed business tax receipts paid. The, what was charged, what was the daily amount charged for not having the business tax receipt?
It was $100 a day for roughly 2,600 days.
Okay.
Let me ask the question, when did we start making tax receipts, you know, for this city?
We've always had licensing of some kind. They were occupational licensed, thank you, Laurie. Beforehand, by state statute, they changed the terminology. So it's been continuous since I believe the city's been in existence.
You know, I heard what the mayor said, but I don't want to go back to that for, you know, as long as we get our administrative fees, that's what I'm going to deal with. I'm just saying, you know, I just don't want the guy to come in and get a slap on his wrist because, you know, he should have done, you know, when he purchased it and went through all this, they should have went through a title search to know what they was getting into.
So.
Commissioner, if I may, just may, my client owned the property when this occurred. So it was, would not have come up on a title search when he purchased the unit. Came up after his ownership of the unit. In response to the mayor, we have paid all of the past business tax receipts, so we're current back to 2011.
So you did pay the extra?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, this sounded better the way I said it because I'm just saying, it makes people think that you was really doing what you was doing. I'm trying to get you down to $632.34.
That's acceptable to us.
And the way it's looking now, I might go back for the $15,112.65.
So.
Okay, before it changes mine, should I make a?
The only, the only thing that I would ask the commission is, is that I know when you don't pay your tangible property tax, there's a 25% fee. And so with that, you know, the $100 for the eight years of the extra 25% fee, I'd like just to round it up for $1,000 to reduce the lien, if the board is okay with that?
I'm in favor.
$1,000 total?
$1,000 total.
I'm in favor of the $634.12 administrative fee. That's what we used to do in the past. I'm just saying, I never set up it with rounding off and rounding down. I never did.
All right. Is that a motion, Commissioner McCray?
Yes, it is.
All right. Do we have a second for $634.12?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. I don't know who didn't speak. Did, was it a four to one?
No, I'm in favor.
Yeah, so four to one. You got it for $634.12.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Moving on to item 12D, proposed resolution number 19-102, authorize the mayor sign a purchase and sale agreement selling a portion of tract one in Quantum Park Overlay Development District to FH Quantum LLC, which owns 3301 Quantum Boulevard, subject to the conditions of use by FH Quantum LLC. So I'd like to know, what are the conditions? Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. Jim, do you have, Jim is still reviewing that contract, right?
The contract for purchase and sale is still not finalized. I believe the, do I see Mr. Weiner here?
Yes.
Okay. He might want to come forward and bring this up to speed. There was an outstanding issue as of yesterday regarding a time limitation whereby if the city, if the, if the property owner fails to perform in a certain time period, two years is what we had suggested through negotiations, that the remedy would be reversionary interest to the city. So that the city is guaranteed that this is just not a transfer, but this is a transfer followed by definitive action with this, within a set period of time. All of their terms and conditions that were proposed have been negotiated and satisfied or contained in current draft of the contract for sale and purchase. I would say this, though, that because there was one outstanding issue as of this evening, perhaps Mr. Weiner will indicate whether his client can sense to that or not. This is still, this approval will still be subject to, my final approval is the city attorney, and neither the mayor nor I would sign the document until all those conditions have been reviewed and satisfied.
Okay. What are the conditions? Or what is?
Mr. Sheriff, for the record, Michael Weiner, here on behalf of FH Quantum. If there was negotiations between Mr. Duddy and ourselves, my client did give me an email consenting to the reversion. And my client's here tonight and understands that the construction has to be completed in two years. My understanding is that resolves the outstanding issues?
Let me just point out, this is a no-cost transfer of property. It's a finger of the lake area, the pond area, the north, northeast corner of it, which would be filled and converted to parking to support further development and leasing or sale of adjacent property.
All right. Well, and what is the square footage of the parcel?
1.84 acres.
Okay. And so we're selling this so that they can build the parking lot for this building and everything that else is going on. And our city manager's nodding her head, so. May I have a motion to approve? Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Let me ask the question. I'm glad the developers here, did this come before us? Before, I'm just saying, about this same little piece of property, about they supposed to have been doing something? Or am I in left field? It won't be the first time.
Different canal.
Different?
It's really different.
I'll take your word for it, but I think I heard it before. Okay.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, with Commissioner Romulus absent, forward to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12E, report by city attorney on city of Delray Beach, Lake Ida Park addition annexation.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last commission meeting, the commission asked me to outline what the options were with respect to the pending petition for voluntary annexation that the city of Delray Beach filed with Palm Beach County in July of this year. I've provided a memo in the back of which outlines the principal options available to the city. These are not listed as exclusion, exclusionary options, that being, you don't have to pick one over the other. They can be pursued in part collectively. But just to summarize for the benefit of the public, as outlined in the memorandum, one is to challenge the voluntary annexation. There's two portions of that. One would be when the matter moves forward for public hearing at the county level. And the other option would be to wait until, to see if it is approved, and then to challenge the approval through court proceeding, or to do both. The second is political advocacy, which would entail the city administrative officers engaging in discussion with the administration in the city of Delray, or alternatively, for individual members of this commission to advocate the city's position regarding annexation directly to the Delray City Commission or individuals on that commission. The third option would be to initiate a competing annexation attempt. I would rank that as a very low option, since it requires the consent of the city of Delray, but it does nonetheless represent an option that could be part of the political advocacy element as well. The third option is to do nothing and to sit by and watch Delray in their efforts to annex the property with the county. The outcome of that would be, based upon the application that's been filed, is that land would stay a zone for open space and park use, not for residential or commercial use. There is a reverter clause in the deed that the county initially provided to the city of Delray that would prohibit that alternative activity, that being commercial or residential. So with those options available, I think the city manager and I look for direction on what you would like us to do next.
So, I'm going to go first, and then Commissioner McCray. Basically, you know, we've heard from the public saying that it really, the sale shouldn't have not have gone through, and we are not the judicial organization to determine whether the sale from the county to the city of Delray is valid or not valid, following government procurement laws. As for the development of this, you know, city of Delray got this because, for $100,000, four acres of Lake Ida, because they said, we're not going to develop it or maintain it as a park. And if Delray does not want to do that, then there's an automatic reverter clause back to the county, and then the county doesn't get, can decide whatever they would like to do with it. The main reason why Delray is doing this annexation is because of the constant code violations that they're getting for not maintaining this property. Just like any vacant lot that, if you don't cut it on every so often, it will be not in compliance. And when they own this, they don't have to worry about the county's non-compliance because they'll have to follow their own rules. You know, I don't want necessarily this property to go to Delray. It has a lot of beneficial properties for the city of Boynton Beach. And, but however, we are subject to attorney's fees if we do anything wrong regarding the past sale or tried to get involved. We could advocate it and try to have a, some sort of mediation, but I don't necessarily know if the commission of Delray wants to get rid of it, especially with the annex proceedings. It doesn't seem like they want to. And so I don't necessarily know what cause of action that we have to go against our neighbor for annexation of this property, because there's not much we can do with this. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. My, I'm in favor of sitting aye and seeing what Delray is going to do. That's what I want to do with this property.
The only thing I'd ask is that if the commission agrees to let the city managers speak with whoever's in charge of Delray, to see what their, yeah, literally.
Any question?
To see what exactly their purposes of this property, and see if there's something that we could do together. But, Lack, I'm going to let you speak now.
This property was initially offered by county to Boynton City to buy it as a park. And that time, county mayor personally visited that place. They know, have no land access for that. Plus, a 3.5 acre lot as a park will be expensive. And to get access from me will be an expensive procedure. So they said, no. Now, the same mayor, sorry, the same ex-commissioner, Mike Frispatrick, went and convinced the Delray commissioner to buy it as a park. And here are two developers. He did not inform them developers. Taylor Levy, as well as Leshron Lebron, are developers currently in Delray Beach. They did not disclose. They took the donation, $100,000, from them and gave it to the county to make it as a park. But then, at the time of signing the deed, they realized there's no land access, even though the county voted to, as a park, as previously, they had asked the Boynton to take it as a park. But later on, the deed got changed due to the, I have the proof. Developers needs that no land access will be available, and the county will take it back. So they said, remove that clause. Then if it is a park, somehow will the people go? If we not make a park, we'll make it an open space. So again, county changed the deed. Couple of times, they changed the deed and they sold it to Delray City. Now, five years have passed. Delray City couldn't any, do anything. Then county went back to them that they have to maintain jones, the safety of the people, and remove the exotic plants and animals, which they initially dragged on. Ultimately, the county went and met the Delray City manager and their staff. At that time, the city manager of Delray told the county, Verdinia Baker, to take back this lot without penalty. I don't know what is without penalty. And Verdinia Baker refused. And ultimately, the city said, we will maintain this park, give us one year time. And they gave him a schedule of one year. One year has passed. They tried to clean it by boats, taking people from Lake Ida Park to that area, and afterwards bringing them back, take the plants in boats to the other side. The debris is also there, still on that, but they cannot carry the debris of the branches. And they didn't bring it. Same thing what happened to, Hurricane Irma came two years ago, and they had the FEMA funds, but they had no access to get the trees off. They are still lying there for more than two years. And the tax collector has been losing $20,000 in the, as his condition. And if I had got the opportunity to make three homes, they are luxury, the tax collector can earn $300,000 every year. And that will, since being in the jurisdiction of Boynton, the Boynton also will get the benefits. So they are dragging it. And if they annex it, what the next step is, they will try with eminent domain to get the land access to me. But mine is a 23 acres long, width is small. So if they take away 25% also, and I have the, on my lot, offer of $9 million for that lot. If the Delray City takes the 20% of it, also, they'll have to compensate me $2 million for that space they do. And after getting the space, still, there is no connectivity between Delray and my area, that five acre long. So they will have to ask for funds. And before selling it to Delray City, the then administrator, Bob Weissman, wrote to Delray manager that county will not fund you for connectivity, and it is on your risk.
So, Lack, what would you like us to do? Because we know the history of it, but what can we do as a city?
Yeah. I repeat, please beg your pardon, what's the question?
What can we do as a city to assist you? Because our attorney says that if we file a lawsuit and we lose, we could owe attorney's fees to Delray. We could go into negotiations with them to see what exactly what they're trying to do. Or our third option is to do nothing.
Okay. My suggestion is, we tell Delray to slate it, abandon the voting on it.
Say it one more time?
To slate or postpone the voting on annexing this lot. In the meantime, we discuss with the county that they'll be getting $500,000 immediately. And the tax collector, $300,000 opportunity loss. And since they are a willing seller, and I am the willing buyer, only the county has to do paperwork, and everybody will be winner. Let's try it that way.
Commissioner Romulus?
So, okay, so what I want to clarify with you, Mr. Calra, is that there is a deed restriction on the property that states that the property has to be used as open space and green space. Are you aware of that?
From the previous owner of this property, county tried to get access from his, this land, and they were not granted because. land, and they were not granted because county sold the rights, choice on the access way one to FDOT for that highway, and secondly, to Lakewood drainage for drainage. So they already sold their rights to access from that property.
You're not answering.
And I can bring.
Right. Mr. Calra, you're not answering the question. Let me ask the city attorney. Is the property deeded as open space and green space, and there is nothing else that can be developed on that property regardless of who owns it?
The condition of the conveyance says that it shall be used as open green space or for passive park purposes, which may include accessory structures and improvements such as pedestrian pathways, gazebos, or shade structures.
Right.
And a temporary docking facility.
I read that.
Right, that's it.
So, as of now, under its current ownership, which is Delray Beach, it can only be used as open space and green space. If the event were to happen where Delray were to decide to either give it back to the county or sell it to us, or whatever, I'm just thinking of scenarios here, is there any way that that deed could be lifted, or would it still remain?
It could be lifted.
By the county?
And that's, the county could lift it and release it from that restriction through negotiations either with the city of Delray to transfer it back, or with the city of Boynton Beach, or with the private property interests.
Yeah.
That's part of the negotiations that the county would have to engage in, but they could release that deed restriction.
So, to wrap up my line of questioning here, I believe, Mr. Calra, I do thank you for bringing this to our attention, but I believe your real target audience right now needs to be the county and Delray Beach, not us. We have no horse in this race at all.
In interest, just for one.
May I finish?
Okay, go ahead. I thought you were done.
No. So, our role right now is to just stand by and be observers and see what Delray or the county decides to do. If Delray decides to revert back, or whatever they do, and the deed is lifted, or the county decides to do something else and lifts the deed, then that gives you permission to do what it is that you're trying to do. Because I know you're trying to entice and say that it would be beneficial for us as a city, for our tax base, for the tax collector, but all that is irrelevant, and it's a moot point right now because it doesn't belong to us. There is a deed currently on the property, and unless it's sold with that deed restriction lifted, there's nothing we can do. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. It's not that we don't want to assist you, or we are not understanding the purpose of the benefits and the assets that this four acre parcel of land would garner. It's just that there's nothing that we can do. So, we, you know, commend you for the work, because I've been seeing you, you know, going all up and down, you know, between Delray and Boynton and the county, but I, again, would stress that your emphasis really needs to be between either Delray or the county at this point, and we can just stand here and watch and see what happens, and in the event that Delray decides to say, you know what, Boynton, work with us, we'll convey this property over to you, then we'll get into the game. But at this point right now, we really have nothing that we can do. That's my take.
So.
I had, it's gotta be just one moment. I know that Judy Pyle is gonna be retiring, and in respect to her and the audience here, I just have a couple of sentences. What the city of Delray Beach has done is they have stolen the land from the city of Boynton Beach because they changed the wording about the five-year access, and most of you can remember that. And the problem here is that, right now, we do have a county commissioner that we're speaking to that does see the fact that there is a violation, that the land purchase was not supposed to have any changes. So this annexation that you alluded to, taking away the onus and the right of the neighborhood. We do not want a park. We do not want a park going in there or a passive park. Eventually, there'll be access, and eventually, we do not want them going through his land. You're gonna be losing out because it was supposed to be a luxury home with 90-foot frontage to Lake Ida, and now that is in severe jeopardy. So what the city of Boynton Beach can do is, sure, you can sit back and watch, but I would be concerned, how in the world did they convince Delray Beach, how did they convince the county to waive the five-year? Mayor Jerry Taylor dropped out of the bidding.
Excuse me, like, we can't undo the past.
No, 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 but legally speaking, and I know you're an attorney.
No, no, no.
Legally speaking, you have to look at the past in order to make.
No, no, so.
You have to look at the past to make the present.
Excuse me, but you, if you want to file a lawsuit, you have that option. This city is not filing a lawsuit.
I didn't ask you to.
The city is not filing an annexation aspect of it. The only thing this city really can do is ask our city manager to see if they are willing to sell us the property. I don't necessarily know if this commission is willing to move forward. I am for that because I understand that this is something that could be developed into a very, what is it, a property that is beneficial for the city. You know, the reason why, you know, we changed the zoning requirements in our corner park overlay development district is because we didn't want tax-exempt properties moving in, and it has not worked out very well for the city. And so this is something that we would like to have as a taxable property. Vice Mayor?
I appreciate your help in allowing us to speak.
Excuse me, but it was not your turn to speak.
One moment, last one.
No, 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 it's the vice mayor's podium.
So, I'm gonna kind of agree in lockstep with Commissioner Romulus that, you know, I'll just, I won't speak in complete sentences, I'm just gonna throw a couple of words out that have been central to this entire discussion. Failed boat by Boynton Beach. Delray Beach succeeded in purchase the land. A dozen accusations that that was illegal. Code violations, which I assume carries some financial consequence to whoever owns that land. No access, no willingness to provide access except for some large fee, which I fully I wouldn't take it for free right now because it seems bogged down in a half a dozen expensive logistical issues. I think it is, as Commissioner Romulus pointed out, this is a dispute either between you, the adjacent property owner, and the county for, in your opinion, violating your rights by illegally selling this land to Delray, or it's a dispute to be dealt with between you as the property owner and Delray, which is the current owner. I just, this, you know, this is like an ugly fight, and we're walking by, and we're being asked, without having any interest in the fight, to come in and get involved in the fight. I just, all I can see is this costing us time, resources, and money, when we could just sit back, watch how the cards fall, and if there comes a point in time where we could annex, lift the deed restriction, allow you to build on it, annex, allow it to be a park, it's just there's, I don't see a single clean pathway through that would benefit the city or the taxpayers. I see an extended period of time, possibly involving litigation, just, again, if, I wouldn't take it for free right now just because of all the problems that are associated with the acquisition and lack of upkeep. Even if we took it, and we're inclined to make it some sort of park, we don't have the money for that. We scrap just to keep our current parks maintained. Plus, there's no access. I just, I don't see a single redeeming reason why the city should get involved beyond the hope that all of these negative things wash away, and somehow it's able to be developed. We annex it, and we're able to reap tax revenue, but that's, that's like step 19 and 20, and the first 18 steps all involve negative things that we shouldn't touch. I like green space, but this is inaccessible, code violating, locked green space, so I just, I don't want to touch it personally. I just see how things play out, and if the future presents an opportunity to us to help, that's fine, but I just don't, I can't see it at this point.
Delray has no utilities on that lot. If any accident happens, they have no road to go to that lot.
We, we.
They have to take the help of Boynton Emergency Department, the police, and security because there's no land connection from Delray to this area. And they asked funds from state government a couple of times. I have the notes so big, and they were refused funds for 3.5 acres. And I don't know why some developers come, couple of them, to me to offer my, buy my lot, annex to Delray, and Delray will allow them, instead of single-family homes, multi-story, and they can make money by annexing my lot to them. So I don't, I'm not a developer. I have my ex, I beamer. I don't know politics, so whatever you decide is acceptable.
I sympathize with your situation because objectively, you made a substantially higher bid on the land through mechanations that I didn't have anything to do with because I wasn't up here at the time. Somehow, your high bid was discarded, and here we stand. So I, I fully understand your position. If I were you, I'd refuse to allow access if not for some substantial fee too. I get it. I just, I'm not willing to get involved in the, in the mess.
I know this has to conclude. You have several hundred people that live in Boynton Beach that do not want that park or passive park to exist, so there is a, there is a fight here that should be fought.
All right, is there any other comments? Is there someone else from the public that would like to speak?
Susan Oyer.
Yes, we have someone else.
Someone over here. Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way, and I would argue that there are people who do want us to have a park, but, you know, that's another story. My bigger issue is us giving away land. When I looked at Dorothea Jacks, when she came in and showed us all the information about our city, we have a very small footprint. We, the last thing we need to be doing is giving away land, selling land. We need to be acquiring land. So if Delray truly wants this, and while I would hate to see our Blue Ways, Green Ways thing and the whole county thing to have more park space, because I'm all about the green, but if this is ultimately going to end up in housing, I'm fine with that, but I object to us giving away this land and just letting them annex it over. So if Delray really wants it, or this gentleman wants Delray to have it, then what are we getting in compensation? We need to stop giving away land.
Susan, this is, this is county land that the city has never owned, so the county.
Then, but it's in our.
No.
Zone?
It's unincorporated.
Is my understanding?
It's unincorporated, and it's adjacent to them.
Okay. Because I wasn't able to access any of the backup stuff. I tried, and the links were not active for whatever reason. So then why are they saying this is Boynton, and why are we in the middle of this? Is it just because we tried to buy this five years ago? Because I remember writing letters in support of buying this.
It's a private property owner and an adjacent municipality and a county government.
So then how are we in this then?
I request to discuss options by the property owner next to you. No one on the commission has indicated any.
Okay.
Willingness to get into it.
Okay, so I totally misunderstood. My mistake. But let's increase our footprint all we can then.
But Susan, you are right for Blue Way, Green Way, that what we discussed it for.
Yeah. That's what I.
I was here.
That's what I recall, because I remember sitting in all those meetings, and this is supposed to be a key component of that throughout the county, correct?
Yes.
So then we do have a say in this because of our part with the county. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, the current maps of the county.
I'm gonna, Lack, you know, does the board want to move forward with any sort of action on this item?
I don't.
All right, and Commissioner Romulus, you do not as well?
The only thing that I want to hear from is if Delray is willing at all to consider conversation about whether they want to deed over this property to us, and, you know, again, you know, kind of echoing off of Vice Mayor Katz's comments, not even sure if at that point we want it, but, you know, I would entertain that conversation if that's something they're even willing to move forward with, but other than that, no.
So do we have someone else who would like to direct the city manager to have a negotiation, or our city attorney to have a negotiation with them regarding what's going on with this property?
I don't necessarily want the city attorney to do it because that means money. I'd rather have the city manager have that conversation and just have her see if there's interest at all for them to convey the land over to us.
I would do it for free, but I still like your idea of having the manager.
Right. I was gonna say, what, am I cheap and free here, or what?
I'll ride with her.
There you go.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm not in favor of us doing anything at this city. I think we need to just sit back and wait and see what Delray is doing. I'm just saying, they're already in a fight. Let Delray see what they're going to do and how they come out, then we will pick up the ball and start running. But right now, when they know that we have an interest, they might not, they might, I'm just saying, we need to play the wait-and-see game.
All right. I'm not ready to play the wait-and-see game, so Commissioner Conserga, do you have any input because we're at a 2-2?
Yes, I don't see any harm. I mean, I do see this as a county issue, but I also don't see any harm directing the city manager to make some inquiries. I would be in favor of that motion. Were you making that motion?
Do we need to make it as a motion, or is this consensus?
I think consensus is fine for direction of the city manager. All right. And that is it. Is anything else that someone would like on the future agenda? Yes, Vice Mayor, then Commissioner Romulus.
With the support of the board, I'd request that at the first commission meeting of each month, that the city staff provide a brief, and when I say brief, it could literally be five minutes or less, update on anything and everything of concern, positive, negative, whatever, related to Town Square. I just want to make sure that, personally, I'd like in a public setting on a monthly basis to be able to hear about issues, again, positive or negative, and have the relevant parties working on Town Square also be present if there is something to be discussed. I don't like the idea that, now that the project's moving forward, if there are things that come up, you know, it becomes a responsibility for us to put it on there, for staff to put it on there. I'd just like a standing, five-minute report, Town Square, first meeting of each month, doesn't have to be every commission meeting.
Can we make it 10 minutes every other month?
No, it needs to be, like he said, first meeting, a meeting at every month. I understand because it's ongoing. It's not something that we can just keep putting office in. You know, I'm just saying, you got the fire department, you know, police department going, you got Town Square going, and these are things that we need to be abreast on. I'm just saying, they sent us things, talking about, we invited to the topping off. Somebody should have been up here tonight talking about the topping off of City Hall or whatever. I'm just saying, you know, it seems like as elected officials, mayor, like we are in the dark and just somebody think about, oh, let's invite them. It's just like he said, we need to be kept abreast, and one, 10 minutes out of a month, it's not too much to ask, but we'll be spending this kind of money.
All right.
So I'd make all the words I said a future agenda item so that nobody has to commit to it right here on the fly. So a future agenda item for next meeting, discuss having a report unless everyone agrees to it right now.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor of it.
You got a consensus.
How could a report be a bad thing?
So we'll hear it beginning October 1st.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Romulus.
Right, I had asked for an update on our social media policy. I don't know what happened. It was supposed to be on the agenda today, next week?
Yeah, it's gonna be next meeting, October 1.
Oh, next meeting, okay, I think you said next.
So, Lack, I know you're still standing up there, but we, we're gonna, thank you. No, Eleanor, you're up.
I just didn't see it any longer on our future agenda.
It was supposed to be this meeting, but we fell behind, and then I forgot to put it as a future to keep it. We haven't forgotten.
Just making sure that it's there. Thank you.
It's in all the departments getting reviewed right now, so we should have it to you at the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
All right, no, that's it. Means adjournment.